We almost, council, let me know when you're ready.
Ready, thank you. Everybody's ready.
All right. Well, I'm reading, I've got my reading glasses on, but I would like to see. Wow, full gallery, that is so lovely. So we'll try and see the gallery and I may not be able to read what I'm writing, what I'm seeing. Welcome, everybody, to Committee of the Whole of April 4th, 2023. It is truly lovely to see such a full gallery, staff and members of WBDC and a new member of our RCMP, we're going to hear from in a moment, members of the public staff council. So again, welcome. And just before we get started, I'll ask the deputy mayor to read the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mayor Donovan. We would like to acknowledge that we are here today in Kisputwick, one of seven districts of Big Magi, homeland of the Mi'kmaq people. We acknowledge the treaties of peace and friendship, and we thank the Mi'kmaq people for the generosity in sharing their homeland with us. We are all treaty people.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And before I ask the deputy mayor to move approval of the agenda, council in particular, we have quite a number of changes. So I'm going to go through those changes. You can write them down and then I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda. The first thing we're going to add under presentations before we go to our local poet extraordinaire. We have a new staff sergeant, Ed Nugent, the one that says police. I'm going to ask Ed to introduce himself and just give us a short bit of a bio, but not right yet, Ed. So that will be the first edition. When we get to committee, staff reports for discussion, item F, water utility rate study, that will come off, that will come directly to council in a couple of weeks, I guess. There's still some work to be done on that. Item H is going to be moved to the end of the council meeting. I will speak to that in a moment when we get to that point. So that will move committee reports up and public input. At that point, and I don't know where that will take us in the, in our timing. We also have two other items. I should also note that due to technical difficulties, we are not live streaming today. There will be an audio of the, of this council meeting, but we are not able to livestream. Certainly, you are all welcome to stay and watch us. Everything is open to the public, but we aren't able to livestream today. We have an in-camera that is going to be about two o'clock. The EDI discussion is an information report. We are going to take that out of council. It's open to the public to listen to council. It would not have been livestreamed, but it turns out we're not livestreaming council and it will be kind of a workshop that staff are going to lead us through and of course, open to the public. So that item, the info report on the EDI results and discussion will, depending on our timing, either be before or after our in-camera because the lawyer is scheduled for and two o'clock. So we'll just have to work with that as, as we go. Have I got all of the changes? So with those changes, Deputy Mayor, would you like to move the approval of the agenda, please?
I would move that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole for April 4th, 2023 be approved as amended.
Thank you. And could I have a second?
I'll second that.
Counselor Butler, thank you. Counsel, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, both. So that is passed. Okay. And Deputy Mayor approval of the Committee of the Whole minutes of March 7th, 2023.
Okay. I would move that the minutes for the Committee of the Whole for March 7th, 2023 be approved.
And a second for that, please. Counselor Palmetier, thank you. Are there any errors or changes or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, both. Those are passed. And Deputy Mayor Committee of the Whole in camera, March 7th, 2023.
I would move that the minutes for the Committee of the Whole in camera, March 7th of 2023 be approved.
Counselor Elliott, seconded that. But our names actually don't go in, but I guess except on the, on the audio. Thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, both. Thank you. All right. That brings us to presentations and it is my pleasure to introduce our new staff sergeant, Ed Nugent, staff. Ed, if you would like to come up, I don't know our staff, if the mic is on, but maybe you could just briefly tell us a little bit about yourself and welcome to Wolfville and nice to have you here. Nice to meet you.
Good. Okay. First of all, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council and everyone for having me here today. I really appreciate the opportunity to come in and say hi and introduce myself. I already met Aaron the other day, but I'll meet all of you individually at some point and do my very best to remember everyone's names. I think I'm starting to forget some cousins and aunts and uncles. This is by far the biggest district or detachment that I've worked in. So this is, it's, it's a, it's a fun new challenge for me. So just as a, as a quick bio about me, I joined the RCMP in 2007 and was posted to a small town in British Columbia, Port Hardy. In 2011, I went to a bigger community, Prince Rupert in BC. And then in 2016, I made a little small move to Cartwright Labrador, right across the country. Yeah. So that was my first detachment command there. It was a three-person detachment at the time and very, very small, isolated spot. And then I went even further north. I went up to Nain Labrador. I was in charge of that detachment as a sergeant there. There were seven of us there. So that was a two-year isolated fly-in post. There's no roads or anything like that. It was really interesting working with the Inuit was, was a life-changing, career-changing kind of thing for me. I really enjoyed that. Attended all, pretty much all the council meetings there, the, the Nain Inuit Community Government meetings and all that stuff. And yeah, it was, it was a really interesting two years. Of course, COVID started right in the middle of my posting there. So that was a challenge in a, in an isolated community. But then in 2020, I, I took a position in St. Peters, Richmond County in Cape Breton. So my third, that was my third province, third division. So I was two years there and then I promoted to here as the new staff sergeant for Kings County, sorry, Kings District. Just, well, this is my second week I've been here. And so I will be acting in the district commander role for the foreseeable future, at least my current, my current posting in that is, is until May, but it sounds like it will be longer. Because Inspector Kamotzki is, has been called up to, to Southwest Nova District to assist there due to a vacancy. So I'll be filling his shoes for the, for the foreseeable future as the district manager. Yeah. So 16, just past 16 years at the RCMP, I've obviously been in, yeah, three, three provinces now, very varied service, but all, all operational, all in general duty sort of a role. This is now my fourth command, but obviously a lot bigger than the, than the previous ones. I have some, have some district command experience in, in St. Peters, Richmond County, but a much smaller district. There were 11 police officers there and two, two PSEs and I've got 62, I think, police officers here now in Kings County, so Kings District. So big, big change. But throughout, I've always made a point of trying to get to as many, you know, council meetings and then local government meetings as I can and have a open, you know, transparent and collaborative relationship with, with the local governments. Obviously here, there's, there's a lot more moving parts. We've got Wolfville and we've got, we've got the district as well and all that, but I'm, I'm gonna spread myself out to make myself available, as available as I can. Obviously, I'm cognizant of some of the issues we've had here in Wolfville. I've been brought up to speed, I think reasonably well. I've got a, I've got a bit of a grasp now on what's been going on with the policing review and all that stuff. And so, yeah, I'm aware of the fact that there's some work to be done and that's, and that we're kind of entering new ground here and we'll fill for sure. And I'm open to, to working with you folks to make sure that you get the best possible policing service you can from the RCMP. And we've already had some discussions about how that's going to look. When we're, when Inspector Kamaski and I spoke to Aaron the other day, he, he committed to the plan, as I understand it now, is we're going to be putting a sergeant full-time in the Wolfville office. So there's going to be a, yeah, yeah. I haven't told him that yet. I'm meeting him for coffee at one o'clock, so I'll, but I'm, what's that? Sorry? Yes, yeah. Yeah. So Mitch Pelchay is going to be sitting, sitting out here and we're going to have to make some room for him over there. There's not a whole lot of space, but I'm sure we'll, we'll find him a desk. And so he'll be, he'll be here as a, to sort of have, you'll have somebody next door during the, the transition to the MPESA and all that stuff. So yeah, that's the, that's the plan as it is right now. Obviously, there's other steps that we'll have to take. There's other, yeah, but, but like I said, I'm going to make sure that I'm available whenever you want to talk to me to, to discuss how things are going to look going forward. So any questions for me?
That's great. Thank you. I would, just before you go, Staff Sergeant Nugent, music to our ears. Thank you. Welcome. And really glad to hear that you may sit into some council meetings, which is where we can announce that we just moments ago decided that anybody who sits through 10 council or committee meetings gets a 10-time coffee ticket. And so if that isn't an incentive to come and join us, Bart thought I was joking, but I was not joking.
I like it.
Okay.
Local coffee.
Local coffee. Absolutely. Fair trade. Well, thank you so much. Lovely to meet you. All right. Wow. That's a nice start to our morning. And here's another nice start. Actually, all of our presentations are nice. We have Jeremy Lutz, who is among many other things, poet extraordinaire in, for the town of Wolfville. Jeremy has two presentations. I understand he's going to do the, talk about community open mic first and then read some poems. This is National Poetry Month. Pre-COVID, we had on this, either at the council meeting or Committee of the Whole, we always had a local poet. Often it was Jeremy. I think my first council in this month, we did have some students from Wolfville School that we quickly pulled together because we were still kind of sometimes on Zoom, sometimes in person. But it's lovely to have you with us again in person, Jeremy, and I will let you take it away. And you have, however you want to organize, whether you talk about open mic first or your poem, up to you. Welcome.
If I may, Mayor Donovan, council. I was just going to frame this for you in terms of, and provide a little brief on the Community Partnership Program, which is part of our grants to organizations and something that allows us to provide financial aid to community groups that can provide programs and events that benefit the town and its residents. And this is one of the programs that we've supported last year and hope to again this year. And just to, just as a brief overview of what we did last year, we supported the Acadia Farm Program, the Community Fire in Acadia, the Lions After the Bell Program, which helped provide food to families and students in need. Stage Profits was another one that did some productions around the community, as well as Broken Leg Theater, which was more of inviting people to come in and try improv theater. And then the Come On Down Program, which, which we're here to highlight today, which was a major success story for us. So I'll turn it over to Jeremy to do this presentation.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Can I stand up and maybe use this microphone? Okay, how's that? Is that all right? Okay. Now my back's to everybody. Okay, there we go. Okay, good morning, everybody. Apologies, my back's to you, Mayor, and council and Laura for her help. Thank you so much. I'm here to tell you about Come On Down and won't take too much of your time. Come on down. Laura, are you going to advance the slides? We'll just leave this one for a second. Selfishly is how this thing started. I have a musician friend in Halifax that has a regular gig once a week. And whenever I would see him play, his songs changed. And as I'm writing, I was looking for an outlet. We have COVID. Things get locked down and looking for a place to share. So I thought I would selfishly invent something that I could go and read my own new stuff. That's where, that was the, that was the original, things changed and, and Come On Down politely borrowed from Bob Barker is, is a community open mic and it's an open mic for everyone. The idea is that somewhere deep down, everybody has a creative bit in them. And somebody's written something or somebody can sing a song, or if you can tap your foot, you can do anything. And so the, the idea with Come On Down is that there's a microphone and there's a venue and we do it at Willow Park. And the only thing holding you back from sharing your thing is you. So we've had some really amazing experiences with people that show up as an attendee to listen with no intention of presenting anything. And then they feel inspired and they get up and do whatever it is. I'll share a story afterwards, but the idea is that, you know, COVID was a really challenging time for us. Everybody has something inside to share and this is family-friendly. This is intended for nothing more than, than fun, really, and just a place for people to go express themselves. So Laura, so why I really kind of shared that right there is, you know, people, we know that people want to share something and I know the open mics around here are busy and this is just another one and taking advantage of this beautiful park that we have. So how do we start? As I said at the beginning, I was kind of started as a selfish thing and that's not what it turned out to be. This is really, the whole thing is fueled by, by strangers presenting their thing to other strangers. It's quite cool. And yeah, that's good, Laura. So who's involved? Big thank you to the town for support through, through the funding program. I have a slide after with a couple of names on it, but you know, these things are, essentially, we give time and to make it a little, a little more presentable. Small budget is very helpful. And so thanks to really everybody that's touched this thing. And so we're going into our third year. And Laura, next slide. So attendance, here's what I've counted. We missed one show in 2021 due to COVID, actually. And so we've had seven shows there. This happens June, July, August, September. I'll show you the dates for this year a little later. Once a month, every Thursday typically, unless there's a conflict. So far, I've counted that 70-plus people have performed. You sign up, you get five minutes, you sing a song, you read a poem, you make something up, whatever you want to do. And we had about 30 to 40, maybe more, community members in attendance. So 70-plus performers, 250-plus community members have come out just to be in the audience. So and you don't have to, you don't have to do anything. You can just come and listen, bring your family. So here's a photo. The first year we were on the main street side and that was, we had a little bit of road noise. And so we moved it to the bottom of the hill here. So that's kind of the setup. Yeah. Next slide, Laura. And this is Ryan Stanley. Ryan's a professional musician. So we're having professional musicians come out and join this thing and Freya Milliken came out last year. Many of you may know Freya. Quick story about how Freya came down. There was a stranger to Freya, a young girl that wanted to sing a song. She wanted to sing a cover and she knew that Freya played guitar. Complete stranger to Freya, messaged her on Instagram and said, I want to go to Come On Down and sing this song. Will you come and play guitar for me? And Freya says yes. So they met at here as strangers and Freya plays guitar. And so Freya came out the next time and gets it. And so those kinds of things are happening here. Here's a quick selfie of what's happening there. I did, this year I bought a few blankets, thrifted a few blankets. So people don't bring their own chair. That's fine. There is a picnic table and yeah, go ahead, Laura. We have reinvented the poster. This is not what it was the two previous years. This is a new creation. And as you can see, you know, there's a kind of a beautiful And um, as you can see, you know, there's a kind of a beautiful uh, sunset and uh, the, these flowers growing up from uh, from around the microphone and uh, essentially it's a, I dare you to type environment, you know, come on up and 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 give it a shot. Next slide, Laura's great. So uh, twenty twenty-three dates, uh, June fifteen, July twenty, August seventeenth, September twenty-one. Will uh, you know, the, the, this will be on social media. Most people find out about this through uh, Facebook ads that we buy. But um, those are the dates for this year. Um, so this is a quote that I had. Uh, there's a video on the Facebook page. Um, and uh, without naming who it is, um, this girl's uh, under, uh, she's in, I don't even know if she's a teenager. So caller eleven or twelve, and she came out to the first year. And her friends uh, essentially pushed her to the front and said, our friend is amazing. You have to listen. And uh, so she read a few things that were incredible. She came out to the next one and uh, sang a, a song a cappella about climate change that she wrote just for that night and uh, and another song about uh, why are Star Wars T-shirts just for boys? Right. So last year we were asking for, yeah, it was amazing. And she, so her mother told me that she had gone home after the first one, put the date on the fridge and then wrote these two things to come back and present the next time. She brought like eight people with her. It was, it was very cool. In a video that we had testimonial video that we requested, if you know, afterwards, if anybody was comfortable, um, she says, uh, it's really fun. I like how you can do what you want. There is no judgment. And that's the idea. It's a safe space. I dare you kind of thing. So um, thank you to the town for funding. Um, thank you to Barb Shaw for Barb's uh, shot some um, dorky videos of me. I think, I think um, in the, that's self-proclaimed and uh, really supportive, um, Parks and Rec Kelton and the whole team. And and I can't say enough about Nick. Um, you have a real superstar there and um, just been super helpful. No excuses for, you know, the stage wasn't there and so we get it there. Um, and really just, it's been a wonderful working relationship. So that everybody here, thank you all. Um, Devin came by last year on the, he was biking home, dropped by, um, just it, you know. I, I think this shows that we, we can, we can do these things together and and uh, make our communities better, right? So that's, that's um, that's, that's kind of but bit about Come On Down, uh, spread the word. Um, and um, uh, one, one other thing that's worth mentioning, uh, many of you would probably know, um, Garrett Mason, the musician. The very first one of these that we did, um, Garrett came down to make sure that the, because I didn't have a sound, somebody to do make sure that the audio was right. And I was a bit nervous about it for feedback. And uh, so Garrett drove from Halifax to make sure that the audio equipment set was set up right. So that people could do this. Um, so he didn't play, he wouldn't play in this kind of situation, but from the professional musicians perspective, this is important because it's an outlet for people. So um, that sort of thing is going on. So so thank you for your time, listen to uh, and uh, and come on down for everybody. If you uh, or spread the word. Um, National Poetry Month. Appreciate the invitation. Um, I'm gonna read you three new things and then I'm going to get out of your hair. Started in nineteen ninety-six uh, by the Academy of American Poets, essentially to celebrate poetry. And um, I started writing about fifteen plus years ago. Uh, I was dating a, dating somebody uh, coming home from a job that I really disliked. And she said, you should write down these things that you're um, rambling on about. So they started as like very short and they started, yeah, it was more about complaining, probably she, why didn't you stop complaining to me and write it down? It's probably what it was. In hindsight, thank, very thankful for her. Yeah. Very thankful for her. Um, and she bought me a little Moleskine flip and I would ride the bus and just kind of write some ramblings down and that started to uh, uh, grow and read more and and um, this is an outlet for me and um, as, as everybody has something. So all right, these are, uh, these are some brand new ones. The ones you trust. I'm skeptical of many things. My best friends are skeptical of the same things. This is where we find common ground, observing life lying to us. The way boyfriends and girlfriends lie after they know everything about each other. When they can't stand another day, another argument that doesn't mean anything. The way, the way we don't want, the way people, we don't want to lie to us, lie to us. I'm skeptical of many things. My best friends are skeptical of the same things. Thank you. All right. We're all confused. Not sure what to say at the stranger, at the gym, to the stranger at the gym. Talk about the weather. Not sure what to ask the person behind you in line. Talk impending snow. We can all talk weather. This winter's weather has been strange. The pond near my house has frozen and thawed countless times. Is the pond confused? Does the pond know about climate change? Is the pond near your house confused? Does your pond wonder about the future? This winter's weather has been strange. The pond near my house has frozen and thawed a number of times. All right, one more. Something's happening. Okay, last one. Keep going. When you do the things you don't want to do, you're rewarded by knowing you've earned whatever's coming. Maybe the reward doesn't appear right away. Maybe the rainbow doesn't present the gold that day, but you know it's coming. Hold on. What if it's because you pushed yourself past your own limits? What if it's because someone else knows you did and you've inspired them? What if it's just the right thing to do? When you put the time in, something happens to the way you present yourself to the world. You glow brighter. Magic is on your skin for others to see. The more magic, the more magic. Keep going. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much, Jeremy. You are a true treasure in our community and as is your best partner who's leaving. Uh, Nick uh, does so much in this town as do all our staff. I have the opportunity seems to be in places where Nick is. And so I appreciate all the work that you do. And thank you, Jeremy. I'm wondering if uh, we could, um, those poems, which were lovely. I'm wondering if you could lend the pieces of paper to Barb so that we could post them. Would that be appropriate? Okay. Fair enough. Fair enough. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thought I'd ask. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Bye bye. Thanks, Nick. Now, um, our final presentation for this morning is uh, WBDC Strategic Plan. And I have, I see a lot of WBDC people here. Uh, on my list, I have Kelly Van Nijkerk and Corey Kado, but I also see uh, others who may get up and do the presentation. So Linda McDonald is awesome. And Jill, are you, uh, you coming up too? Moral sport.
And, and I'm, and I'm really just here to, to introduce this, the star performers. I'm Linda McDonald, um, and myself along with Jill Delaney, our uh, co-presidents of the WBDC. Today, Kelly Van Nijkerk, um, is, she's our community member on the board and uh, she's going to be be presenting our strategic plan for twenty-three, twenty-four. And uh, Corey Kado is um, her uh, right hand. Uh, Corey's new to our um, our board and we couldn't be more thrilled. Uh, Corey is uh, has stepped into the position of treasurer. And uh, so he talks all things numbers. And um, so I will hand it over to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Jill, for being here.
It's Jill's birthday today, so.
Oh, happy birthday. Do we sing? Do we sing?
Happy birthday, Jill.
Kelly and Corey, you just know you need to put your mics on. Um, not so much so we can hear you, but so that the audio recording can hear you.
Okay, is that good?
That's great.
Great. Okay, so um, hello, I'm Kelly Van Nijkerk and I'm very pleased to be here today. Um, in the next ten minutes, I'm going to walk through the highlights from twenty twenty-two and a forward-looking view into what we have planned uh, as key projects for this upcoming year. So in this presentation, we have the WBDC Strategic Framework, the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Year in Review and the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Annual Plan. As well in, as in, in the appendix, you can find the budget and uh, Corey's here to help answer any questions related to the budget. So here we have the WBDC Strategic Framework, or this is um, a, a slice of it, so to speak. And I'm not going to go through this in great detail. Um, it's really the foundation, our guiding light uh, for, for all of our activities. But I do want to just draw your attention to the activation pillars that are listed on the right-hand side. These pillars um, are the foundation for all the activities and projects of the WBDC. So everything that we do can be filed into one of these five categories. Communications, member benefits, placemaking, sponsorships, and operations. Okay, so the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Year in Review. So while there were many projects on the go last year, we've chosen these three highlights uh, to share with you today. So on the left-hand side, in twenty twenty-two, we had very strong participation from the business community in social media promotional giveaways. The Santa Shops in Wolfville Campaign is an example of that type of execution. And as a result, we saw engagement soar. Um, so that's things like views, uh, interactions on social platforms. And the Wenham Wolfville Instagram account grew its followers by a hundred percent uh, last year. So marketing on behalf of our members continues to be of value. And at the same time, the WB, WBDC is tackling the most efficient and cost-effective or effect, the most efficient and cost-effective way to achieve that initiative, initiative. Next year, we had a successful ACOA grant and that funding allowed us to uh, do two beautiful placemaking murals in town. And we received very positive social response and engagement from both town residents and tourists. I'm sure you've seen them around. We're very um, pleased with how they turned out. And then lastly, uh, there was an eruption of participation from the business, from the business community in the Winter Greenery Program. It seemed that almost everyone wanted to participate this year and we saw uh, participation increase by a hundred and fifty percent. We had new standout offerings from multiple vendors. And at the same time, the WBDC streamlined our backend payment and expensing process. So it made it easier for businesses to participate. And then it also made our admin, admin um, more efficient and reduce cost. This is an itemized view of all the activities that we took on in twenty twenty-two. It lists the activity, the pillar it falls into and the status. So there's two slides with um, this listed out. I'm not going to go through all of these activities here today, but this presentation will be made available to all of you afterwards. So if there's anything that you want to dive into, I'm happy to take that offline. Before I move on, there is one activity that I do want to highlight, which uh, had tremendous value for both the board and our members. And that was the hire of our new coordinator, Tammy McAvoy. Tammy started with the board a year ago and she is so enthusiastic and really on top of things and just adding tons of value everywhere. And she's really spearheading a lot of these activities with the support of the board. Um, so that's been a big achievement. Okay, skipping ahead to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four highlights. So similar, similarly, of all the activities that the WBDC has planned for this year, we've chosen these three to highlight as our key areas of focus. And starting on the left, um, communication is really at the heart of what we do. It continues to be the, the most important um, area of focus for the WBDC. We want to make sure that our members feel heard, that their voices are being heard and that they are aware of the value that the WBDC can bring to them and the resources that we have. So the plan to execute on that this year is to better engage with members through things like educational length and learns, news, ongoing annual newsletters, sorry, monthly newsletters, but throughout the whole year, support for grant applications and more in-person events. Next is um, so member benefits, in my opinion, is also one of the most um, uh, is one of the best ways that we show support to our uh, business community by essentially helping fund some of their key activities. So these are in the form of co-pay programs. And this year, we hope to formalize new co-pay programs such as photography, uh, social media giveaways and uh, signage improvements. And this would be in addition to existing co-pay programs we already have, such as the winter and summer greenery programs. And then lastly, placemaking will continue to be a priority for us. We have uh, two placemaking initiatives that we're looking at for this year. The first is an art installation in Waterfront Park. And this, something similar to what you see here in the picture where it says Kingston, but imagine Wolfville. So this is what we're imagining. And then the second is a parklet, which you could see in the second image below here, um, in front of just us on Main Street. So these are the ideas that we have and we're working with Parks and Recreation on helping on bringing these to life. All right. So again, now we have an itemized uh, list of all the planned activities for the uh, for this year. As well as the pillar they fall into and a description of those activities. Um, so again, I'm not going to go through all of these in detail, but one that I do want to call out is the upcoming annual, annual general meeting that we have for the WBDC and the member community. Um, we really want to make this a celebratory event this year. We want it to be a night to remember. We want it to be exciting and really want all of uh, the business owners uh, to attend and counsel as well. So the date is earmarked for June thirteenth. And so stay, stay tuned for more information on the AGM, but um, it should be wonderful. Yep, and that's it. That's a wrap. And as I mentioned, we have the budget listed in the appendix and Corey, our treasurer here too, is available to take any questions on the budget. So are, are there any questions?
Counsel, are there any questions? I just, I will just have a comment. Um, I, I think your strategic plan is great. It's really exciting. Thank you for coming in here and presenting in person because I don't think we've had an in-person uh, one since the pandemic. So it's nice to have all the vibes in town. Of course, we're always really excited for new businesses to come into this town. So um, and I, I do like the activity tracker or the pillar and the status. I like that. So thank you for that. How, how do you find when like, um, when immigrant, new immigrants are coming in here, starting a business? Is there anything that you, that you sort of think about that they need require differently than, than other?
I think just in, in general for, for anybody starting a new business, like one of the things that we have on our activity tracker for this year is to do a better job of um, packaging sort of a welcome package for new businesses. Like here's what you get. Here's the layout. Here's sort of welcome to Wolfville. Um, right now, that isn't really being executed on. So that is on um, part of the plan regardless of if they're, yeah, where they're from or why they're starting a business. We need to formalize that more.
Yeah. And I do like the way you're focusing on communication. That's, that's really important too.
Yep. Further that question, um, it's also, I think, really important to acknowledge that now that we have business offices um, in Wolfville that are fully staffed, um, or will be fully staffed. They, uh, that is like more of an open world policy. So any business in town, uh, anybody thinking of starting a business, um, has access and just walk in, um, open door policy, ask questions, get information, that kind of thing. So we're there to create a, a, you know, a, a physical place to go as opposed to like who I talk to and looking online, which is what we had in the past. So I think the offices really, really document that, um, you know, and, and certainly. And certainly.
Yeah, definitely through the more in-person communication with the business members. We really want to develop the WBDC brand in the town so that we're really recognized as the go-to for, for the businesses and, and so, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. And thank you both for this presentation. I, I find it really exciting to see this summary. And, and it's such a positive summary and positive development. And I think it's the kind of thing, especially post-COVID, that all businesses will really, really appreciate seeing. And, and especially that focus now on the assistance with grants and all of, I think, from what I remember, that's been well-received. But it's, it's a new service really to our business community that I think is going to be very, very important. Certainly, the ones that I've spoken to, they've taken advantage of it. We're very appreciative. So it's, it's great to see this on so many different fronts. So thank you for coming in today.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Members of council? I have a comment and a question. Might be two questions. But the first one, and maybe this is to Corey. It's my 12th year on council and my first term of council, I was the WBDC rep. So we're going back 12 years ago. The budget was the same as it is now, and I recognize that the budget comes from your members. That was a question that came up during our budget meetings about the town giving the amount of money they do to WBDC. And we clarified that this is that we are collecting the money on behalf of WBDC, but this is coming from your businesses. Not asking Corey or anybody for, but it does strike me that your budget has stayed $100,000 from your, your businesses for at least 12 years. Maybe it was that much before. I think it was actually 115, but for some reason you gave the town back 15,000 for parking. And so we just got rid of that, taking, giving it to you and taking it back. But I, you know, I, I know that you're growing at the time. 12 years ago, there was a full-time executive director, I think, was the title. But anyways, I just, I just throw that out that it occurred to me that you're probably the only budget that has not increased. And this may be something for you to think about.
If, if you're asking me if I want more money, that's a silly question to ask an account. But I, I think in terms of where we stand financially, we do have a very strong balance sheet in terms of reserves. So I think our goal is to really ensure that we're using funds in a manner in which we're intended to, we're not meant to hold on to funds in trust or investments. So we're working through that surplus and ensuring that we provide our members some benefits. And then in the future, if that's a topic you want to discuss, then most definitely.
Well, it's not, you know, it's your organization, it's your money. But it's just an observation that I thought, you know, I can't think of any other budget, including ours, that has stayed the same as it was 12 years ago. So I just make that observation.
And to, to, to first point, we have been, when Jill and I moved into our hole, there was an awful lot of money just sitting there, and it wasn't getting spent. We weren't quite sure what. And there seemed to be a bit of like a, you know, you know, well, we, we, we do need to make sure that we have a reserve. Not certainly the reserve that we have had. It has been our whole spend. That money. We, in fact, during COVID, I, I think you'll all recall that we didn't actually take our full $100,000. We chose to give that back to the businesses or not having this taxed. Because everybody was struggling. And still, we have money and we have, we, we overspent. I mean, if you, when you take a look at the debt and the attached suffering budget, we overspent. Last year, we spent more than $100,000. It's certain that our intention to spend more than $100,000 this year. We will get to a point, however, where, you know, we will know what that spending looks like. We will reach the point where we have reached our reserve. And then at that point, we, we do discuss, we have discussed whether or not it makes sense to contribute that $100,000 in respect for our businesses or whether or not we feel we can do more critical benefit by asking for additional funding. But for the time being, we're healthy and we're happy. I think we're delivering a good product, so.
And we're also going after any available grant funding as well. So last year, we had $30,000.
Clearly managing your funds in the right way, and it's just an observation. And kudos to you for being able to do more with the same amount of money than happened 12 years ago. So you're doing something right. You should do a course on that. My other comment in this will come up in our discussions later this afternoon with respect to EDI. It has come, it has come to council's attention, and you'll find it in the EDI report if you access the, the agenda. The large number of international students that are at Acadia. One of the concerns was not being able to find food or other products, hair products, for example, that they might be able to get at home. And it came to our attention. It's not really something that the town can do, but it's something that, and there may be some outreach to Carls or to shoppers in terms of products, or if only connecting the international students to those businesses. And I don't know how a business, but I'm sure if one asked for a certain product, the business would say I can get that in or not, but I just wanted to put that on your radar. It will come up in our discussion this afternoon. You'll see it in the EDI report. But it's something, it really is a more of a business community issue. But it may, it was not something I was aware of until quite recently, but it's come up twice now in, in discussions with Acadia or with Acadia students. So just put that on your radar. There are no other questions. I thank you so much. Congratulations in all the work you've done. And I do really see a difference in the 12 years that I have been in and out of the WBDC board and the work you're doing. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
And we will be dealing with the actual three-year, was it contract or funding agreement, funding agreement this afternoon. Thank you. That brings us to the end of presentations, I believe. And I'm wondering, you're welcome to leave. You may or may not get, you may not get your point on your 10 times attendance, but thank you, Staff Sergeant. Thank you. I'm just wondering if we have anybody for public input. We do. So Devin, you might want to put that back up. Very tall person.
Just while he's coming up, Public Works are paving the ramp at the fire department. They'll be done in the next 10 minutes. So just so we won't have that shaking all day.
Thank you. Yes, very tall person.
I am a very tall person. I've been a very tall person for a very long time.
As, as you know, a public input. We, we actually have 30 minutes for it, but we will give you three or four minutes.
I'm, I'm.
If you would, if you would just ask your name and your address.
My wife said, you gotta respect the three minutes. I'm like, should write it down. Don't vary from the script. You'll go way over.
Just your, your name and your address and then whatever.
My name is Roger Tatlock. My family have been residents of Wolfville for over 20 years. I've owned, I've owned a home on Chestnut. I own a home on Grandview. My daughter lives on Gaspar Avenue. My son, just after 10 years of living in Wolfville, has moved away to be with a girl. She should have stayed in Wolfville. And she should have been there. I have a few things. And literally, I'll just take about three minutes. I gave Laura a copy of this. If you want to look, did he say that? You, Laura, that's a copy of it, and you can have a look. So I want to thank the council for their engagement on the topic of a basic income guarantee, or BIG, as I'm going to call it, for the sake of my three-minute time. At the last committee of the whole, Mayor Donovan started off by listing four ways that people of Wolfville can engage council and shared her genuine desire to expand the list, if possible. I used email to contact Councilor Elliot and Mayor Donovan. My request via email was for the council to consider writing a letter to the province to ask them to work with the federal government to implement a universal basic income, or UBI, in Nova Scotia. The request was accepted for consideration by the council. This is an example of how your engagement processes actually do work. Thank you. Thank you for being, for being open to public input, and thank you for considering my request. My second thanks is for the motion that you passed at the last council meeting. You'll recall that council authorized the mayor to write a letter to the federal and provincial governments urging them to create an all-party committee to explore the feasibility of implementing a basic income guarantee. The motion passed is better than what I asked for. Thank you. A universal basic income would not be the Canadian way. A basic income guarantee, for those that need it, is. A basic income guarantee is not a social welfare safety net that you can get all tangled up in and never get out of, or actually fall right through. A basic income guarantee is a floor that you can build on and raise yourself on. Thank you for the motion. I think it's a good motion. We all agree that a BIG is a federal provincial issue. You recognize that right away. The strategy being adopted by national organizations is to mobilize individuals and municipalities to push up to their provincial governments and to parliament. In Atlantic Canada, this pushing seems to be working. The PEI legislature wants the province to, to be the big, big trial for the nation. The federal government has been approached three times so far to start negotiations to make this happen. PEI is not going to give up. The federal government's not responding, mind you, but PEI is not going to give up. I believe the last letter they wrote, they got a letter back saying, thank you for your letter, which is a step in the right direction. The first two were ignored. The Newfoundland Legislature started its all-party committee work on the issue of a BIG for Newfoundland in November. You can read those minutes online if you're curious how Newfoundland's going to do. In New Brunswick, the three largest cities have all asked their provincial legislatures to work on a BIG. In Nova Scotia, Halifax, Picto, Annapolis County, and Wolfville have all passed motions asking for a BIG to be implemented, or at least to be examined. Lunenburg County, the town of Lunenburg, and the K-Bretton Regional Municipality are all now in discussions to figure out what they're going to say up to the powers that be. I've met Keith Irving, our MLA, to discuss my request that he initiate discussions in our legislature on a BIG. At the end of our most recent meeting, I asked Keith what I could say to others about my communications with him. And he said that I could share the following, and I quote, I wrote it down, said, I can say this about your work. He said, yep. And this is what he said. I quote, "I am interested in finding a path forward to examine the idea of a BIG in Nova Scotia." He went on to say he's particularly interested in the current situation of low-wealth workers, which we're all painfully aware of, and the wage pressures that are putting on, being put on small and medium businesses, again, which we're all painfully aware of. I'll continue to, to talk to Keith about his work and, you know, gently help him move forward. Finally, I think I'm coming to the end. I request that when letters are sent out as a result of the council's motion, if they could be made public. That's my request. Thank you. Thank you for my three minutes.
And thank you. And the letter was sent. I just forwarded it to council. I don't have your email, or else I would have forwarded it to you. We don't usually make the mayor's correspondence public because, but it, I don't know if that is practice or.
So what would be your request? Like, we wouldn't typically post it online, but it's available. Like, if you had access to it, you could share it if you were comfortable with that.
So if you give Wendy, or Wendy probably has your emails, I will send it to you today.
There is, there is an amazing groundswell. And the more that we can put it out for people to think about it, the more that we can say, look. I mean, if you look at the number of influential business people, the number of business people in Canada that have signed letters of support, you look at the number of municipal units that are, you know, struggling with supporting citizens and the motions that they've passed. It's just good to get it out in a positive, positive way. And I'm sure your letter would have been written in a positive way. It's just to aid in that pushing up. And we have a couple of words out of the letter that indicate the intention of the Wolfville Council to share with media and to add our voice to the call. That's.
Wendy actually has the letter. Council have it now as of this moment. So you, rather than be too circuitous, Wendy, forward that to you.
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Roger. Thank you. We have to, we have to, we still have to make the coffee card, but I've got you down for two. All right, honor system, honor system. Okay, honor system. Thank you. Bye-bye. Well, the question is, do you have to stay for the whole meeting? Or can you just, that, that we'll have to, we'll have to develop a policy on the coffee card.
Stay for 10 meetings.
Yeah, maybe 10 meetings. The whole meeting deserves something more. It'd be a bottle of local wine, of local wine. All right, that, thank you. Let's move to committee reports internal. I will just go through and ask you if you have anything you'd like to add. The first one is Accessibility Advisory Committee. You have the report, Councilingham. Is there anything you wish to add? And members of council, are there any questions of Councilingham? Okay, Planning Advisory Committee. Deputy Mayor, is there anything else to add? I noticed we do have something later in the information reports coming out of planning advisory, but that's in the staff report. And any, any questions of council to the deputy mayor? And Policing Services Review Committee, CAO, anything else to add?
Just, just a couple of points I just wanted to highlight, because we talked about this at the end of another meeting. And so I just wanted to circle back with the committee. So with the decision to move to the MPSA, we won't be going out for an RFP in the near future. I just wanted to make that clear. We'll be going through our negotiation this year directly with the federal government to negotiate a direct contract. And then we'll have a chance to evaluate to see if that's something that will work for, will work for Wolfville or not. And then council can make a decision at that point as to when and if to move forward with an RFP. So the committee did have a discussion at the last meeting. I think there's some interest and some value in having that committee continue to serve as a sounding board as we go through the negotiations. And also to do some work around some other community safety initiatives that may complement the traditional policing model. So we have a proposal from Dr. Steven Schneider, and we will be going through the Mass Casualty Commission report recommendations to see how that can tie in. So the committee will meet again on the 24th of April to consider that. We'll have a report that'll come to council at Cow in May with some recommendations. But having said all that, we will have to update the terms of reference for the committee as a result. So we'll work with the committee to get some feedback at that meeting, and then we'll have that as part of the report so that we can tidy those up so that their mandate is very clear. Go forward, because it has evolved from the original terms of reference. So I just wanted to point that out. So April 24th, and we'll have something a bit more formal for your consideration at the May Cow.
Comments, questions of council?
Can I just add to?
Yes.
I just want to say, because our, that committee, or at least our community members have been very engaged and have an in-depth knowledge of many things that even we don't. And I just wanted to say thanks so far for their commitment to it, because they have, Wendy can say, Mayor Donovan can say, I think they've just given so much, and their, their knowledge is irreplaceable. We're so lucky to have it in our town, really.
Very strong committee. I will just add, I received a request for an interview yesterday from the Globe Mail asking how the Mass Casualty Commission report would influence the Police Services Review. I did have a quick chat with Aaron, because I wasn't sure how to answer that. I have scanned the report. The executive summary is over 300 pages. So needless to say, it was a, excuse me, a quick scan before I called her back. I always worry, you know, no matter how good you think an interview is, it, you know, it always does not reflect always what you said, although we had a nice conversation. And my, I, I just updated her basically on, on where we are and what we were going to try and negotiate and the need for more community focus. I was really happy to hear the comments this morning, because that's exactly what I said, that we would be looking, hoping to negotiate some greater community engagement of the RCMP and that we would, we had a year to figure that out. And if we could not do that to meet the needs of the community, then we may go out for another foreign RFP, but we'll see how that issue comes out. So hearing, seeing nothing else, that brings us to the CAO report.
Sure. And just to segue on that, so the unofficial cheating cup happened last weekend. And there were some challenges with it. I think overall, you know, we clearly got through the weekend, but there, there's still some ongoing communication challenges between the RCMP and our team and just the approach of how those events are handled. Having said that, I had a fairly good debrief with both Harold Prime, who is in the acting role, and then with Ed Nugent, when he came in to see me and feel hopeful that both have listened. and then with Ed Nugent, um, when he came in to see me and feel hopeful that both have listened. Um, and do want to work with us on a solution. Um, both even have come forward with some ideas around how we might approach the negotiation to strengthen some of those concerns as part of that process. So I think having the sergeant moving into Wolfville and just some of the visibility issues we talked about, um, are going to be helpful. So, you know, it wasn't an overly positive day from the perspective of our team, uh, going into Cheaton Cup. And, and Barb sort of, um, was in the car with Kayden, um, riding around and getting that experience. But, you know, certainly we've documented what our challenges were and we've conveyed those to the R C M P. And, and I think with the change in leadership, I'm hopeful that we'll see some improvement. Um, the biggest thing is trying to be the, the proactive on the front end. And when the ops plan says that that's the approach, and then that's not the approach that's taken, it's really frustrating. If, if you try and you don't succeed, at least you've tried. And I just think the approach, we, we have different expectations as to what success is and what the approach should be. Um, and, you know, recognizing there's some limitations, obviously with the R C M P as well. So understanding where they're coming from. But, um, I think we'll get there. And I think having the ability to negotiate the drug contracts is going to be a window of opportunity for us. So that was just a good segue that, uh, cheating happened. Um, we've got some videos if anyone's interested in seeing them. Um, by and large, contained again to one, one street. Um, but again, that's not, not an acceptable way to see the day unfold. Um, I can say that I did debrief also with Acadia, um, on the Monday after Cheaton Cup. And they also were, were concerned and it was probably the most, um, engaged I've seen them in terms of wanting to look for some out of the box, um, opportunities for future events on campus. So we'll see where that goes, but, um, certainly, you know, it's got their attention as well. And I know I sound like a broken record because I probably said these same comments after homecoming and after cheating cup last year. But, um, I do feel like, you know, we're learning from every experience and the partners do want to, do want to try. So we'll see where that goes, but I'm hopeful and I'm really glad that, uh, that Sergeant Nugent was able to come in and meet council this morning. So just a few more things. Oh, sorry.
Aaron, I think Deputy Mayor made that comment on that item.
Yeah, it was, um, it was a busy, busy time, but I really wanted to just say thank you to Barb and Kayden. Um, I was out on my street, my front door at ten in the morning and there they were driving around getting ready for the ten thirty, eleven o'clock A M start. Um, and I was talking to other residents who also noticed, um, the car, our Wolfville car presence. Um, and I think that makes a big difference for people. Um, it certainly did. I, I wasn't expecting that kind of visibility that early and, um, and I, I was glad that it was noticed and recognized and appreciated. So I just wanted to make that comment. It was nice to see our staff taking that initiative so early on. And I, I think it's, it presents a challenge to the others responsible for policing to get out there as well. And so, um, just, yeah, thank you.
Carry on.
So just on that too, um, we have our part-time compliance position currently up, um, and being advertised. So if you know of anyone that's interested, please encourage them to apply. While we have that vacancy, it is a good opportunity for folks like Barb and myself and anyone else on our team that wants to get out to actually ride with Kayden so that he has a second person available to him, but also to sort of see on the ground what happens. Um, so I went out St. Patrick's Day night with him, which was actually quite quiet, ended up being busier the next day. And then Barb went out on Cheaton Cup, so, um, making sure that he's not out there by himself. But, uh, once we are able to hire that person, then they will be able to resume some of that evening activity, uh, with him. So a few more things, just a, a shout out from the planning department. So James, uh, is actually hoping to have his level two building certification by the end of this month, which is huge accomplishment. He's been plugging away at that now for a number of years. We're really lucky that H R M, uh, welcomed him in and was able to get him to, uh, help on some of the level two inspections that he required to get a certification. So he spent quite a bit of time down there and they have a lot of files on the go. So he was able to, to move through that quite quickly. So that's very exciting for us. And Amanda Brown, who's been plugging away at her fire inspection, has finished her home study and, um, is having her level one by the end of May as well. So she's been appointed fire inspector and we've got both of them ready to hit the ground running. It's been a couple of years of a lot of training. And so now it's nice to come out the other end and go be able to get out in the field a little bit more. I know Devin is excited about that. So we're getting there. Um, and I should also note our park staff are returning to work on Monday, most of them, I think all except for one. So we'll be welcoming, welcoming them back to our team and they'll be out and about and you'll see them starting early next week. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention that wasn't in my report is we found out on Friday that the province has created a new fund, the Sustainable Services Growth Fund. Don't have a lot of details on it yet, um, but Wolfville got four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in our bank account on Friday, which my man Mike was like, do you know what this is for? And I got the letter later that day to the mayor and I, um, and essentially it's, it's pretty broad. Um, it's for capital purposes. I did have a call with Juanita Friday night just to see if she had more details. Her understanding, still to be confirmed, is that it's stackable. So there might be an opportunity for us to stack it with some of our I C F, um, dollars that may come in or have come in. So, um, that's, that's exciting because we didn't expect it, uh, to come in. And it's for things like improvement of sewer, uh, systems, for active transportation, for, um, improvements to accessibility. So there's four bullets in the letter. So details to follow. Money's in the bank. So we got that out. Um, my understanding is that, and again, I don't know how public this is, but we're not actually streaming. Um, is that the equalization had been doubled last year and this year it was not. So the province took the thirty-two million that had typically gone to double the equalization last number of years and put it into this new fund. I don't really know how they came up with the dollar value, like how we ended up getting what we got. But, um, I think it got split amongst, um, all the municipalities in the province. And so everybody got a different amount based on whatever criteria that was. So again, stay tuned for that. But that's, uh, some really good news that I wanted to share. So that's what we know. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Kelsey McKay.
Thanks. I have one on parks. Uh, so students are engaging and there's a student project. I just lost it on my page here. Uh, for the West End, um, during the parks, like that's on local booms. They, I've spoken to them a few times. And then this was in your C A O report. So, uh, I think they are wondering what that looks like. Either will they be engaged or is it just a project? Um, do they want to hear from them? What, what does that look like?
Yeah. And I can get Kelton to speak to that.
Uh, hi, good morning. So we started with a group from the Community Development Department yesterday as part of a three-week project, capstone project for their, for their program. Um, we're focusing on two parks in the West, one, uh, the new development, uh, between, uh, Hillcrest and Sterling. And we're also going to have a group do some, uh, work at Basin Drive Park, which we have, uh, talked about in, in future park development. So the plan is to, uh, unveil, enroll, invite, um, community members to participate in a couple of, uh, sessions, engagement sessions on those two sites. Um, details are just getting ironed out with the group the next day or two. Uh, but tentatively planning for next Thursday and next Saturday, uh, Thursday evening and, and Saturday afternoon. Um, we'll have the details of the next, uh, day or two, um, and have those invitations go out, uh, to those neighborhood ref, uh, residents. It's, it, we're trying to do a very individualized, here's an invitation to this space as we're considering these neighborhood parks. So that hopefully answers the question. Yep.
I, I, is anybody else? I have, um, a few questions. I'll just, I will just go through your report, starting with the parks. There's a statement that, uh, uh, says, where is it? Encourage council to triangulate, triangulate this information with other sources, research data, jurisdictional scan, their experience, et cetera, to make informed decisions as we move forward. Uh, triangulation is a technical term. I, I, I used it all the time in my consulting world, but I don't think it's something. In fact, I asked, uh, my consulting partner and he said, I don't know, I've never heard that term. And I said, well, you should have, but, um, I.
Harder in more than one way.
Yes. Yes. Because I learned it from actually a, a young, uh, uh, planner who worked in our office. And I thought this is great. It's actually something I shared with Devon. This is something I would expect Fathom to do. I don't think it's something council does. Basically just for council to, to know, let's take, uh, pickleball. Um, if we were to look at the demographics of our town and the age, uh, and the types of, which is tends, notwithstanding Acadian, tends to skew a little bit older, happens to be in the sweet spot in terms of age of pickleball users. There's lots of trends that pickleball, I just use that, is growing. So we could say, yes, it makes great deal of sense for pickleball to be, and I'm shout out to the pickleball players, for this to be something that we need to find a space for. However, there are other things and I, I will relate a, uh, they're used, I don't know if we use this anymore, but, um, at one time in the seventies and eighties, they count in Ontario, they counted up all the arenas and they divided it by the population in communities. And they said, therefore, you should have one arena for every ten to twelve thousand people. That simply was because that was this, there was no science to that. But it tended to become a used standard. I remember going into, uh, do a job in, uh, Godridge, which was a ferry retirement community. And they did not have a lot of demand for arenas, uh, and they didn't have, they didn't meet ten, one per ten thousand people. And the recommendation was your demographics don't suggest, don't support that. So don't worry about it. Um, that's what triangulation means. Take three things and say, does this suggest we need this or we don't need this? I think this is a consulting, uh, activity. It's not a council activity. So I really, I, I think that that's important. Council shall look for that, but I don't think there should be an expectation that council does the math on that.
Uh, yeah, and I can just clarify. I think that was really, you know, replace out the word consider. So you're going to get a variety of information coming in different data sources that will help inform how we move forward. So.
Technical term maybe. Yeah, I would like to see the consultants do that analysis for us and council can be aware of how they did it. But this read that we are expecting council to do it. I think that was, uh, I have a question about Cheaton Cup and I don't know if it can be answered, but I, I was there along with councillor Elliot at the other end of Summer Street. Uh, actually I pulled in and then the D J came to pick up his, uh, equipment at the time that I had drawn in. Who, I, I, I'm not asking for an answer right now, but I'd like to know, given all of the information that's gone to our landlords, who arranged for the D J? I understand the owner of the property was there and was upset that the police weren't responding, but it seems to me somebody ordered the D J and had to know you don't have a D J for twelve people. So is that being followed up?
So there is one tenant that, um, we were able to pinpoint as the person that invited the D J. They have been issued a second S O T. They actually got issued their first St. Patrick's Day weekend. And we are actually looking at some options around actually, um, laying some charges with Beta as well. Okay. So Kayden is following up and Beta is the communications group that came and set up the D J. So yes, we know who it is. And yes, that's been followed up.
Um, surely they would have, like you don't hire a D J if you don't expect to pull a lot of people.
The second offense is over a hundred dollar ticket.
All right. And my last question, this may come up. Because I see we have something from Director Lake on the East End. Um, but I wonder if we have any sense for confirming a date for the public hearing. And the, the reason I ask that question is I understand that there is an eagerness to get for the developer to get going. And yet when I kind of block out the, uh, so I don't, maybe not an answer now. Maybe you're going to tell us that later. Okay.
Yeah, I can speak to that too. Devin will go through it. On your desk, you have a printout. And on the second page, there's actually a proposed schedule that Director Lake will go through.
I, I didn't have that when I asked the question. So we'll just put that over.
Yeah. So June thirteenth, just to answer that, tentatively is the, uh, public hearing date. And Devin looked at all of the, um, scheduled challenges. Cause I know there's a lot of folks traveling in a way and tried to come up with a schedule that would meet, uh, the needs of council and the community. So we.
It's also the date of the A G M for W B D C. I just wrote down June thirteenth. So anyways, that's, that would be a concern. All right. That, those were my questions. Uh, so if there are no more questions on the C A O report, we can move to, uh, it's ten fifteen. Let's try and get through to, uh, uh, ten thirty before we take a break with wherever we are on that. So let's, um, maybe try and get through stage profits and the compost site. Uh, we'll see how we go. So, uh, we'll move to that report and is, uh, Kelton is going to speak to that.
Good morning, council. In the situation of, uh, the grant request, I simply act as a conduit from the requestor to council. So they have, uh, put forth a request through our one-time grant, um, application for funding to support their production of, uh, their state profit for, for venue event this, uh, this June. Um, the information has been detailed out and included as an attachment for your consideration. And there's a motion on the, on the table to approve, discuss, or adjust, um, the request. So that is what I've brought forward and happy to entertain any questions if there are questions or, um, support your decision-making any way I can.
Wondering if we want to put the motion on the floor and then comment. Is that council's preference or comment before? I think it's shorter ones. So, Council Butler, are you? I just saw you going for your light, so.
Oh, just heard.
Oh, okay. Who would, who would like to put the motion on the floor?
I can do that.
Okay, Council McKay.
Thank you. Uh, I would, uh, that committee, the whole board, the following motion to council for decision, that council approved the grant request from Stage Profits in the amount of ten thousand dollars for their twenty twenty-three production of Andrew Lloyd Webber's Jesus Christ Superstar.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second by Council Butler. Open it up for questions and comments. Council Butler.
I just have one. Just because of recent grants to organizations and communication that got misconstrued about some things. Where does this fit in terms of their, I'm looking at their income projection sheet. Would this fall in the grants section or the major gifts section? Like where they, they've already allotted money in the income projections for their budgeting. So when we're asked in the public about, you know, the town of Wolfville gave this amount to Stage Profits, I see the breakdown of the two thousand dollars for their grant. This is an additional eight thousand. So would that, have they already allotted that in the grants section so that when we're communicating it to the public?
Can't answer that question exactly, but I can follow up if that's the request of council.
Okay. I didn't know which, which section it led. Um, the only other comment I wanted to make was I know that something like with Devour where we, the money went to specific things. I, I don't see anywhere where we could say the town of Wolfville contributed to this so that it's.
Different policy.
So it's evidence that.
It's different policy.
Okay.
Am I correct? I don't have the policy in front of me.
Devour was a, a, a capital contribution.
Okay. This is the one-time thing. Okay. So it would just probably fall under just basic grants that they applied for. Okay, that's everything. Thank you.
And, and just to clarify, because I know this is audio taped, so they, uh, they are part of the partnership. They got two thousand. I, I assume they're asking for ten, not eight. Am I correct?
They're asking for ten.
Ten total or?
Ten total.
Ten total. Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Aaron? Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that I, I believe that our contribution would be under the grants because in their submission, they have provincial and municipal grants and then brackets fifteen thousand. So I'm assuming we would show in that category.
Which is different from the Devour grant?
No, this was just to his first question around where we would, where it would show up in the, uh, in their projected revenue.
But unlike Devour where it's a, uh, which would be like the Larch Grant and, and potentially Landmark East, which are buildings. This is a program grant, so.
It was, it was, I know the, I know I'll get asked, uh, because I've been bombarded with Devour and where the money went and all that process. So I know that they'll say, oh, there's ten thousand more to this. Where's it going? So if it's just a basic grant that they applied or it's going to the production as a whole, perfect. Thank you.
Council Palmetier.
I just want to be clear on how that ten thousand comes, so two thousand is, that's where I'm not going to get to right words. But two thousand is they can get every year and the eight thousand limits them to what, four years, five years?
So they're eligible to, um, apply for this. So they're eligible to apply for this CPP program that we have that Nick spoke about before the presentation we heard this morning every year. There's no guarantee that they'll get it, but they're eligible to have that. The one-time special operating funding is available for something like this production, sort of out of the norm. Large costs involved with it. So they're able to come and ask for that one-time grant from council in addition to or in lieu of that to 2,000. So they've asked for 10,000. So they likely will not receive a CPP grant this year. This is their ask. They can go back next year for that $2,000 CPP grant. But once if this is approved, they have to wait, I believe it's another four years before they can come back with another one-time operating request. If it was a capital request, it's an eight-year waiting period that they have to do.
Deputy Mayor. Thank you for that clarification, Erin. When I read this, I, I mean, I would like to support stage profits. I have already bought my tickets and I think this is going to be a wonderful production and certainly a very worthwhile event for our community. I was, I guess, a little bit divided on the amount on the tiffle 10,000. Because I'm, I'm thinking in the context of the budget that we just passed and the fact that we've gone back to our rate of two years ago in, because of the challenges that we're facing. I, I personally would be more comfortable if we made an adjustment to that amount. Maybe look at 5,000, which was, I think what we often regularly gave to groups such as this. And whether we can have a discussion around, around the amount. Definitely I want to support it with a contribution, but I I'm a little bit torn with the full 10,000, to be honest.
I think the motion would have to fail and then we could have another motion.
Wasn't, wasn't it last year that we did approve 5,000 on, on the stage profits, but they didn't go ahead with this production because of COVID? Am I correct on that? Yeah. Yeah.
Can I, they, they still had a production. It just wasn't, it wasn't Jesus Christ Superstars. So I think it just went to the anniversary production, I think. Yeah.
I am sorry, I am going to be away when this happens. So you'll have to represent the, the mayor of Wolfville. I, I am sorry. I guess I, I oh, sorry.
Sorry, sorry. That's okay. No problem. I, I definitely want to support this group as well. I think it's going to be an amazing production. I think it is also going to be an economic driver in our town. So I'm actually comfortable with anywhere from five to 10, to be honest. The only question I would or request I would have of the group would be to make connections with their, their community or their promotions. People go to work with the WBDC, make sure that they start promoting it, that the businesses have appropriate people on staff. And that this becomes a real a real show off out of our town. Cause I imagine there's going to be lots of people from all over the place coming to it. So for me, that would be the, the only ask I would ask of them is if there was money to be given, whether it's five or 10. I'm up for discussion, but that, that communication happened because I think that was feedback from other things we've done in the past that we didn't do particularly well. So I think that would be something that would be okay to ask.
Happy to include that if council decides to move forward with that, with the, with the letter.
Anybody else? I also support, I think it is a huge economic driver and I, and I like the, the, the comment from Council McKay in terms of involving our business community. I think this is the amount we gave to the CFL. And we know, which was good. We know that our business community did not benefit as much as they would have anticipated. So I think this is an opportunity for economic development. As I say, I'm really sorry that it's the date that it is because I will be out of the country. But I, I think it's, as the CFL event was great for Wolfville, this is great for Wolfville. And in terms of showcasing the community, the more tie-ins we can make with the WBDC and you know, I'm sure our town will look very spiffy on that weekend. So I will, I will support that amount as well. It is kind of a once in a might be once in my lifetime, but Council Inum.
I, I am comfortable with the 10,000 amount given the same reasons, but I do agree with Jody that I really want the communication to vote there and it's important to work with WBDC as we know from, from the CFL coming here, you know, there was a lot of disappointment. So if we can, if we can combine that a little bit more and you can relay that to the members of their board, that that is a really important piece of this, of this puzzle.
We can have the same traffic management though. That was awesome.
Probably not. Oh, so I just have one more question. So, so the one-time operating grant, this is only, you could say you can only apply for this once every eight years or 10 years? Four years. Four years. Sorry. Okay. Thank you for that. Okay. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I know that. Okay.
Yes. Council Elliot?
Thank you. I have to confess, I'm feeling very conflicted. I, on, on economic grounds, there's one rationale. On aesthetic grounds, which I'm more familiar with. I have, I have some issues. And I don't know whi- which way to vote, honestly, you know, should, should I consider the economic driver aspect or the cost of the pyrotechnics? It's just, it's very difficult, I have to say.
Council Butler.
I'll help you out a bit. When we were discussing this production, the last of my had the exact same conflicts. Just because, and I didn't go into that today because it was communicated to me that I'm not in charge of their budget. I'm not in charge of what I see on the budget sheet. I have to think of is this amount something that the taxpayers of Wolf will be okay contributing to this production? So while I shared the same conflicts and probably a heck of a lot more than you do about what I see on the budget sheet. I believe that the town of Wolfville wants to support the coming back of this production. It's been great to be involved in productions that have been sellouts, watching people come back, watching the community thrive again. The pandemic was hard on everybody, but I'm going to speak for the theater community. It was, it was rough. So I'm, I am okay with $10,000 going towards the production of this. I already have my tickets as well. I am looking at how the ticket prices are going and the way they're marketing. I think it's going to be a fantastic show. Yeah, that's how I have to look at this is that I can't, I'm not, I can't approve their budget, but I can go with this amount based on what I think the taxpayers will want.
Council Elliot?
Thank you for that. I have a son in this production. So I'm, you know, he's King Herod. I gotta be supportive. But you know, I'm working on a production with the women of Wolfville right now and we're just trying to do it as the most cost effective, like not asking anybody for anything. Process. And so I just can't help contrasting those. So, okay, I shall, I shall vote on the economic side as opposed to the other and, and shut.
Are there any other comments? Are we ready for the question? Question. All those in favor of the motion as read, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. That is passed. Thank you. Elton.
Mayor Donovan. And then Director Thompson, you will ask that they communicate with the WBDC or is that something I should be doing with the WBDC?
It wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, I certainly have noted that as part of the, the offer and we'll make the connection with you as the council rep on the WBDC.
If you can add it to their agenda too, it would be appropriate. It's 10:30. Compost site is maybe lengthy. So shall we take a break? Thank you. 15 minutes back here at quarter two, 11. Thank you. We are on a break. Audio.
Director Lake, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Donovan, and good morning, council. I'm going to jump around a couple of documents here and I've placed an 11 by 17 document on your desk. So there's a title page to that. The second page. Is it, is it relevant to sort of share my screen right now, Laura, or is there anyone needing that? Okay. Okay. Yeah. So I just thought, just before I get into the compost report, I just zoom out a little bit on the east end and provide a bit of context. And in particular, looking ahead to a schedule, knowing that everyone's busy and it's really in my mind, hard to do almost anything after the end of June. It really hard, like even harder to schedule. So just starting at the top of this, as far as moving this forward, I'm working hard to get hopefully a very finished package. If you're involved in the PAC work, you've seen the different iterations of the project that we've been bringing forward. And this last one will be very close to complete. And the next step after that is to schedule a public participation meeting in front of the planning advisory committee. So that if you're not aware, the town does have a public participation program policy that's required under legislation as part of having planning documents. And so essentially that is a step that the town has used in the past. It also is really beneficial for the planning committee to hear directly from the public before making a recommendation. So we're suggesting that that is on May 2nd or close to May 2nd. There's advertising requirements and, and lead time between these. So it's really important. Some of these gaps in between are such because of the advertising requirements. From there, we would have a separate meeting. I do think it's important to give the planning committee some time to digest the feedback and we would bring back a staff report and the final package for them to make a recommendation on to council in and around May 11th. And then we would schedule a special committee of the whole to discuss the, the east end specifically. And so the reason that I have a yellow box on the screen around those last two steps, those are really at the will of council. And so I don't want to be making too many assumptions that I think it, I think it would be a mistake to schedule a public hearing now. I'm trying to give you a range as when it could work. So kind of that's the earliest in my mind that a public hearing could be scheduled, just to give you an idea. But I think we need to get through that meeting at committee of the whole before we're scheduling something. I'm not anticipating at this point, what or who will speak both at our public input period and how things may change through the PAC process. There, there's a, the will of the committee there that needs to be brought forward to council for your benefit. But yeah, I think this is realistic and I think if those last two steps are moved out a little bit or they're in and around that date. I think that would be, that would be a great success. Just because I'm working on this sort of as reports are being written. I've sort of advanced things beyond the report that I submitted on Tuesday. So I just want to provide a little bit of update. And also just note at the bottom of this slide that we have been meeting with the owners of the Kennylands as far as working on more detailed road cross-sections. We don't anticipate the road locations to move on that piece of land. So Alex and I have been working on what would typically be in a servicing agreement. A lot of those details as far as sort of the level of of council involvement typically will be in the secondary plan. And so all of that will follow the direction of the secondary plan, but Alex is much more concerned But Alex is much more concerned with the details. You know, how much gravel is going under the road? Where are the pipes going? What pipes are connecting to what? So that that is ongoing, and I'll provide additional updates. I'll try to give as many updates on this as I can and send it, whether it's through this, the CIO report, or sort of a dedicated piece. Just this, this is in the package, but I just want to highlight a few things that we're working on in real time that are that are coming in the final package that that will go to Planning Committee and Council. So just to orient everyone on the sort of importance that has sort of underpinned this entire process, which is really high quality public space and really paying attention to what I would say is the public interest in what we control. So that's the road right of ways, the the public space in terms of parks and open space, and also in terms of trails. So on the Kennylands, I there's one question that we're still exploring in a bit more detail with our traffic engineer is just the connection through to Bishop, given some of the correspondence that I know council and planning committee have received. So I have a red box around that. Just we will bring more analysis on that. The road network coming in through the Kennylands is the same as people have seen for for quite some time. There's not really a whole lot of options, given the nature of the site. Some of the green space has been a bit more developed, further advanced. Some of the trail connectivity is shown on here, and I think is a bit more realistic at this point. And on the Maple Ridge side, again, the road network is is the same. It's it's in this open space and trail connectivity that we're doing more work, getting into more detailed looks at existing contours and the ravine that's there to reflect more accurately what is the best area to be preserved. So that really runs with a water course setback that we would have in our development constraints map. As you see there, similar to other parts of town. I'm just wondering if there's anything else I should highlight here. We are working on road standards that will be communicating with the engineers working on these projects. The intent is for a sidewalk and and active corridor on these streets. The streets would also have tree planting in the public right of way. And just finally, as far as an overview goes, I just want to give an update on where the zoning is. And so this is really the ultimate exercise of the secondary plan is to establish development rights on the land. So you'll see some changes here, if you've been following along, just on the Maple Ridge side.
Do you want to take questions at the end or?
Maybe just after this slide.
Okay.
And then I could transition into the compost piece.
Thank you.
So the area along Main Street really hasn't changed. I'd call that a higher density area because of its location and proximity to Main Street. Also because of the suitability of the land, it's probably the best portion of the lands in all 80 or 90 acres that we're looking at. Coming back to the south, we have transitioned this into what I'll call a more low density area. And a lot of this has been through discussion with planning committee, talking about really cementing housing mix and options into the framework that we're bringing forward. So we had something, I would say, that was a bit of a higher density option. And the concern there is obviously if everyone builds to the highest use possible, I think you're going to get something that is really counter to some of the discussions we've had. So the tool that we have through the through the zoning is is to limit that. And we're going to be proposing. I don't think the zoning is going to change a whole lot. I've worked a lot on this over the last few days. So I think this is what you'll see coming forward, maybe with some minor tweaks. On the Kennyland side, there is John's actual home, which everyone, I'm sure, is familiar with, which is currently zone C2. The land that goes and is attached to his parcel, this is all actually one parcel. These lines are not actually there on a legal survey. These are the lines that I've been working with. So we're just carrying or recommending to carry the C2 zoning from his property to the south. And then the Kennylands itself, from a zoning perspective, really hasn't changed over the last number of versions which council would have seen. So I'm just going to close this, that those are the pages that you have with you. And again, these are kind of work in progress. These will be polished up. We're working on more illustrative mapping that can really bring some of this to life. And we're working on some 3D that will bring to the planning committee soon.
Take questions now. Counselor Colmater and then Counselor Elliott.
Thanks, Devin. I've got a question on the on-street parking. So no on-street parking on the new streets on the Kennyland?
At this point, there isn't really the width there in what we're proposing. So we could we could bring that as part. I we were assuming that that would be part of the discussion at our next planning meeting. Yeah, I mean, there's. Yeah, I think there'll be different opinions on that, certainly. I think the way the sites are oriented and the the way that the density is distributed, people really should be providing most of the parking onsite, including some visitor parking. But yeah, it's going to be, it's really going to be a trade off with the widths that we're working with and the slope around what type of sort of AT amenity we want to offer versus do we want to take on more of a right of way? And and make that right of way even larger for on-street parking? So I think that it's it's I knew that comment was coming. So it's something that we need that we need to think about.
Yeah, it's not so much the multi-b buildings, but the that's certainly on the end that's closer to Bishop. Like that's done individual houses or duplexes, quad, stuff like that, where there will be more than you're not going to have more parking spots. It's just going to be a bit of a nightmare. But you know, that's just my opinion.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes, I was just looking at the schedule. And last month at the PAC meeting, we talked about doing a walk around tour of the view planes. And I don't see that on the list. So is it happening?
Yeah, I was just talking to Counselor Madira Voss about the best way to go about doing that. Yeah, there's a there's a lot of pieces moving, particularly just getting the documents prepared so they can be consumed publicly and sort of be cohesive. I do plan on scheduling that. It's just a matter of fitting that in. It's also a little bit limiting, depending on the scope of what type of walk we're looking at. I guess I should say it here. My idea would probably be just to go up to Reservoir Park and mostly focus around the view plane. I think facilitating a walk around the entire site. I've walked it a number of times recently. It's it's really challenging. There's a lot of rows, bushes and different things in certain sections, if you really wanted to get into it. So I'll call it a limited sort of walk, certainly not comprehensive, to look at a few particular things. We're working on scheduling that.
Okay, so that's before it comes to council again.
Yeah, no, I would hope to do that in the next three or four weeks.
Great. The other area that's that's a question mark for me is where the existing trails come down to Maple. I'd like to walk around that bit, too, if possible.
Thanks, Devin.
Counselor Ingham? Yeah, I know what planning we talked about the units per acre. So I'm looking, I'm looking here, and you have 16 units per acre. But at the top, you have 30 units per acre. Because that's like a big, we haven't firmed up that yet, right?
Yeah, I'd prefer to have like the benefit of explaining a lot of that and in the final report. So I'm giving you kind of a work in progress piece there. But I'll I'll just comment on it that that particular piece of land. So we're trying to be fairly equitable in the existing ownership that exists on those lands to give development rights that are somewhat equivalent. It wouldn't look great if one person gets tremendous development rights and other people aren't. So that site in particular, where we're contemplating a mixed use center, the right of way width is actually quite a bit larger to accommodate things like on-street parking. So you're looking at a 22 meter wide right of way in that section. Plus, we're talking about a public space right in the middle of it. So you're really limiting that particular landowner. And so what we were doing there is offering slightly more density along Main Street in a concentrated area. And the way we look at the density overall is not just per site, but it's cumulatively over, in this case, the Maple Ridge and the Kennylands, but also overall. And so we're trying to hit this sort of 16 to 18 units per acre. But if you take your magnifying glass and you sort of zoom in on a certain area, that number will be higher. You know, if you just took the area around one of the multi-b buildings, the density would be tremendously high. But it but we're looking overall, and that's sort of the focus on the things are popping up, and the focus of the green space and the trail connectivity and the different pieces. But we'll we'll unpack that in more detail. And hopefully, with some of the 3D and the layouts, people can start to see how how that can work. It's it's very limiting, given the area that's left, to have an equivalent density there.
Can I just make one suggestion when I'm looking at this map? I'm not really good at reading maps. I'm going to tell you that. Is there any way you could put some of the streets that are already on there for context? I know that when you had the the students come in for the the C2, we did, it would have been helpful to see where the streets are because we were talking like, where is this? Where's that? So if we could have some street names on there, that context would help me out a little bit better. Thank you.
Counselor McKay?
Thanks. Thanks for this, Devin. I actually don't have really any questions on the content of it because I know it's a work in progress. So we'd rather wait till we get the full package and PAC's analysis of it. I just would like to ask that if you do a walk around with PAC, that the rest of council be invited as well? I'm very visual, so I'd like to go.
Yeah.
That that was the plan to have.
Good. I'm just going to move in and just step through this actual report. Hopefully, that sort of broader context was helpful. So yeah, maybe I'll just step through some of these visuals that were on the screen here. So the first one is really just painting the bigger picture that I'm not 100% sure everyone's aware of. But within that red dashed line, that's all land that the town owns. So that is Reservoir Park, going over to the east, all the way to Maple Avenue, to the west, to the reservoir parking lot, and going to the north beyond the compost site within the ravine and working to the north to the barns that are still there on the Kennylands. So I think just sort of understanding that is is important as as we talk about this. This road network is is some line work that we've just put in our GIS as a working line. It's pretty close to to what we're working on. And the secondary plan is not exact, just just for the for the record here. And then you can see the location of the compost site. It's fairly obvious on the map where it's sort of bare earth with the treat area around it. So the nature of this report is really to to manage communications and expectations, to be honest, as we move this forward. So I thought it was really important to bring this and move council along as we are working in the background with with the developers and trying to move forward with something during this construction season. So the what we're going to come back to here is is a recommendation around the compost facility on Maple Avenue, closing by the end of May, and bringing further information back to council on on other options and and possibilities at a future date. I'll just provide a bit more context before we before I wrap up. So again, this is this is really just a one aspect of the east end, as I was indicating. But I think it's an important aspect to to manage. So this is the same map. So yeah, there were some questions about trails that have come up planning committee in particular. So I assume a lot of people walk these trails. When I could run, this was my favorite running route. So there's there's a series of trails that run just to the west of the compost site. A lot of people also connect out on to the farm road and and down through to Maple Avenue. But there's also a self-contained loop in that section that that comes back. And there's a series of loops. You can't see them here, but I'm sure everyone's familiar with the trails that I'm referring to. The the reality of some of the some of the roadworks and and public safety is, at some point, we would be communicating that portions of these trails would be closed. And probably the closure would be on the south side of of the work that that's happening. And I think there's already a loop there that can be created and some signage can go up there. So just to be open about that, that is is likely coming as work progresses. The compost facility itself, you can see here, and on a lot of the secondary planning that we've been doing, we've talked about that as either a green space. Likely in the final version, you'll see that. But it also presents opportunity for a building site in the future. If that's something that comes to fruition. And I think that's another discussion that needs to happen at the council table. But there's a there's a site there, is the point. And then the road would be moving through the south of that. There's talk about future crossings. And when once this is completed, new trail connectivity. And you can see that in some of the public space standards that I presented earlier. But the intention, obviously, is to have a high quality crossing, safety, new trails. That I don't think that should be a concern. That's probably the reality of just meeting the minimums at this point. If we want to put a trail across a road going in to an apartment site, which is which is in here. The other thing about this location is if there's some people coming and and talking about not putting the road across there. I think that presents a lot of challenges from a traffic management perspective. We're also trying to manage a view plane, a publicly protected view plane, and limiting this this piece of land quite substantially through that as well. And then we have another group of residents that are coming out and discussing Bishop Avenue. So if we weren't put to put this here, we would certainly be putting a lot more traffic through Bishop Avenue. Or we would be creating a situation with an incredibly long cul-de-sac into a high density area. And yeah, just just basic traffic engineering wouldn't wouldn't be recommending for those things. So this loop is very useful for having two ways in. It also facilitates access to the other side of the development on the Maple Ridge side when we get into having better transit in the town, for instance. What else can I say about this one? I think that's most of it. I did allude to the compost site in a planning report where we went through some frequently asked questions. And we just alluded to the overall cost of alley waste and some other options. So what this is looking like in the short term is some initial earthworks on the site, starting once the roads open and people can actually do things on their properties. And that could include moving into the compost area this summer. And so I just want to be really proactive on this to manage expectations around what the service may be. And so what we're recommending in here is that the facility would be communicated to be closed at the end of May, and and we would bring back some other options, whether it's through Valley Waste or whether it's the town providing another site in town for a similar service. I think that's probably all for sort of scanning through the report for me. And yeah, I'll pass it back to you. Thank you.
Questions?
It's not a question, it's a statement. It's fur is closing the the recycling place. That's fine. I have any, that's great. But we, I think, having living on Maple Avenue and see what happens on Saturday morning and how people are DMing things in back of pickup trucks and trailers and the loads that go by my place. And if you're trying to tell people to go to Colebrook and make five trips instead of five trips to our local one, now the loads will be worse. And then you're going to go ask, go there and pay to get in. I think that that's going to be not very well received. So I think we need to come up with a someplace here in town for the lawn, lawn trimmings and stuff that we have. And whether it's up at the ridge by the reservoir or down by Home Hardware, I don't, I don't know where, I don't know where it is. But to ask people to to go to Colebrook is not going to be very well received. Thank you.
Slur McKay. Yeah, I, I would say the same thing. I, I'm closing it. Actually never used it myself, but I don't have an issue with closing it and to let development happen. But I, I think we do really need to find either an alternative. And it needs to be communicated quickly and we need to find it fast. Just saying in the. Just having chit chat. Having even our compost pickup every two weeks when the storm. Uh, stopped at that, that one time was the amount of complaints was atrocious. And the last time I campaigned, I was actually hit up a number of times saying our compost pickup is not sufficient. Every two weeks says doesn't hit it on a normal schedule, let alone when you're having clippings and all of those things and no other place to put them. So, um, and people were frustrated by that and a scientist gave me a, a long. Sidewalk lecture on, on the diseases that happened from compost not being picked up and don't remember at all. It was quite in depth. But you definitely knew what he was talking about. So I just, whatever the solution is, I think we need to find, I mean, we, we need to be committed to finding it now. Uh, and communicating it swiftly. So I, I don't know if you know what that is or.
Yeah, I, I mean, Erin may want to comment on this. From my perspective, I don't think there's a really quick solution to going through approvals to open another. Site to put this type of debris. It, it's, this isn't a thing you can just sort of throw anywhere in, in twenty twenty-three. So we're looking into those options and we would bring something back to council. And I think we also want to have a better discussion with Valley Ways to see if there is something there. That can be a better service for residents at, at the curb.
Yeah, can we just pop in camera just for a minute?
I have a motion to go on camera, please. Counselor Pulmoner seconded by Counselor Elliott. All in favor? Aye, we are now in.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're moving towards the motion.
First to ask if anybody else has a question? Another question, Councilor McKay.
Yes, to reiterate the emphasis on communication.
My, my quest, oh, Counselor Pulmoner.
Well, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that what we're talking about is that we're talking up in the road on town property, right? It's, it's, we're going to put a, a road on our existing property.
So, so just so everyone understands the way the roads building works is the, the developer builds the roads. They're then sort of gifted to the town. We, so all of the roads in the East End will eventually be the towns. Just, just so we're all on the same page.
I, I have a question that I should have asked before, but I thought we were going to have some more discussion when we came out. It just in terms of timing, what you went through before on this handout suggests that. The earliest we would have approved, the secondary plan will be sometime late June. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Yes. So I'm thinking of questions that may come from residents. We closed the compost site in early May to allow for the development of a road. On land that does not have approval yet. Is that, I, I, is that an issue? How, how do we respond to that when someone asks that question?
It's not anticipated that any type of actual like civil road building would be progressing. There's a tremendous amount of earthworks that are required there just to prepare things, which.
Tree cutting and so on.
And, and move, and moving material around. And so we don't regulate private landowners from doing that, particularly at this scale. The province has erosion and sedimentation control measures in place. And we're working with, I mean, honestly, we're fortunate that the owner of this land, one of the owners is also the owner of an engineering firm. So, you know, you know, they, they're taking this very seriously.
My question is theoretically, so we close this in preparation to prepare for the road. What if the, but it's possible until the secondary plan is actually approved. The road could find itself in the future in a different location. That, that's, I'm just, it's just a timing issue. Because we will not have confirmed the secondary plan by the first of early May.
Yeah, I think if council wants to change the, the location of the road, that really needs to be communicated now. And so if there's thoughts on moving the location of the road.
This hasn't been at P A C for discussion and so I'm, I'm just.
The road network's been at P A C for months.
But my understanding is that nothing is approved until the secondary plan is approved. We haven't, or, or if that's the case, then at P A C, we should be incrementally approving different parts of the secondary plan. Feels a bit cart before the horse here.
I think, well, I think the reality on the housing crisis that we're in the province is we need to work with people on moving.
Crisis, crisis. What I'm wondering is, and I know, we all know the residents will ask it. You haven't approved the secondary plan, but you have approved the roads and I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just think we need to. We're, we are making it inconvenient for people. On the assumption that it has been approved, but nothing will be approved until the secondary plan is approved. And if, and if we need to move that up, then we should move that up at P A C.
I think the developer, well, the, the schedule that I laid out has legislative requirements that we can't really move something ahead. And we, we could approve in principle the location of the road. I'm taking that direction as I move forward on key issues with the planning committee and then checking in with council. That if there's a, a big issue with the location of the road, with the engineering, with the traffic work that's been done. We, we need to start flagging those issues.
That's not my question. My question is, what do I say when a resident says you haven't approved the plan? And yet it seems like you have approved the plan. So explain that to me. At that, I'm, I'm paraphrasing the residents and I don't have an answer.
Yeah. So I, I, I mean, the developer at the end of the day is going to be proceeding with initial work at their own risk on the, on the land. And absolutely, I don't disagree with you. There could be something that happens where we completely change this. I'm, I'm proceeding in good faith to try to use this construction season is, is, is a big part of this. If, again, I think if the will of council and there's not a comfort level there. I really think from a staff perspective, working with a number of different parties to try to move this forward. I, I really need a clear message on that. But I, you know, nothing we're doing. Isn't, everything we're doing is very consistent with the plan. And at this point, I'm just working on the really fine details of it.
I, I totally understand and maybe Counselor McKay has, I, I don't have a problem. This is not, this is not an issue for me, but I do understand that. We, we've got a cup in your scheme, in your schedule, you have a couple of public meetings. We know that there will be residents who don't like where the road is crossing. We've already heard that. And my concern is that, that we are saying to them, yes, we have made a decision before the public hearings. Before we've, before it's gone through P A C, before council has approved it, but we just did. That, that doesn't feel like a good answer for me. Counselor McKay, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah. So maybe it's a question. So when I'm looking at this and, and I'm not in the weeds as much as at P A C, as much as you all are. My, when the check-ins have come back for me, I sit here and say, okay, this is sort of how it looks. This is what it's going to look like, done in-depth traffic studies and the roads are sort of the first thing. There will be no development, no approval to anything else. That's going to come in this, in either of those parcels. I am trusting that our planner and our engineer has said that this is. The safe, this the most appropriate place for the street. So it will cross there and. Until it's done, there is a potential that it could change, but in good faith, we're moving forward and saying that this is what. As professionals, you would pull this, this is the best place and I can move forward with that on that assumption. And then when it comes back for final approval, that will all go. And then whatever development happens after that will yet to be determined. But for now, a road was probably, I would say fairly low on my list, if that's what. If I'm hearing currently that our planner and our engineer has said that is the best place for that. And it's highly unlikely that it could change regardless of op- opinion, I suppose. But because I don't know if it's the best place to mount either, but I have to take your word for that. Professional judgment.
I guess one of the things is the fact that we're suggesting that this. Moving that the. The motion states the compost site will close by the end of May. And then the. Looking at the public discussion around the plan in June. There is work, if I'm understanding this correctly, that the developer can begin to do. Regardless of the fact that the rest, that can legally begin to do in preparation. That can happen before those discussions. And so I think what, one of the messages I think that I would like to convey is the fact that we are. Closing the site. For safety reasons, because the developer, even though some of these. Final pieces haven't been approved, is within their rights to begin to. Prepare the groundwork, right? And so really, my focus would be on allowing everything that can legally happen to start. And making sure that it's done in a, in a way that is safe. And, and I think that's the main concern that I would have is that the safe use of that, that roadway. And that's one of the reasons we're, we're shutting down the, the thing now.
And I think that's a good message. It concerns me when I heard to put the road in. I can see cutting the, cutting the trees, removing the trees. You know, flattening the earth or whatever, but as soon as they start to dig the road, then we're committed to the road being there. I, so I think that's an important message. And if, and if in fact you are aware that other things are happening, that would suggest, you know, there's a point at no return. That this is where the road is going. I don't think we should be doing that before we have an approved secondary plan.
Yeah, I. I don't know if a motion, another motion would, would benefit in terms of improving in principle, the location of the road. The timing kind of is, I'm not sure I can solve the, the timing issue that you're talking about. I think it's a communication issue as Isabel stated that the developer will proceed. The secondary plan will be approved. At some point and along with that is a servicing agreement that would be consistent with the. Uh, secondary plan. So we're working on that concurrently to the secondary plan moving forward. And that, that has been communicated for six weeks, eight weeks now. So we've, we're quite deep into doing that work.
I think it's the wording facilitate road construction. Which is a little different than to, to prepare for future development or something like that. It is, it says. It, so we would, we have a motion on the floor. We would have to, I don't know what other words. I'm, I, I think it's reasonable for us to, for the developer to be cutting down trees and leveling and moving junk. Or what, whatever they have to do, but it's the term to facilitate road disrupt, dis- construction. When I know somebody is going to say, and I just don't have a good answer. No, we haven't approved it.
But there is a motion on there that like kind of ties in with the compost, right? Like I get.
Yeah, I'm okay with, yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm okay with the closure of the compost site to facilitate. Preparation for future, I mean, it's just, this reads as the road is going to be going in.
Yeah, preparation would be good.
I would suggest. I would just suggest introducing the word safe. Because that is really one of the things that we're really concerned about is that it would mean. Safety for our residents not going in that area. So I, I, I don't know if, if that would help people to understand that we're just being cautious. And maybe we change instead of end of May, we give an actual like June sec, or that weekend, you know, we'll close. June third or something.
To, we can, we can wordsmith this. I, I think we're on the same page. I think we want it to be safe. And I think it's just that word facilitate road construction gives an image of the pipes are going in.
Should we say for, to prepare for the.
Future.
Eventual or future road construction?
Construction and to ensure say something in a safe manner.
Sure.
Can, we do, I know we don't follow Robert's rules.
Well, I'll just address the elephant in the room. I don't know how long the Kenny Landowner have had this now, four years, five years. How, how long Devon has this been kicking around, four years anyway? At least for that he's been involved in, in the construction business, it's summertime work. You don't do this. You don't build in the middle of January. Your costs, I remember I worked in, in the business. You know, your costs in the winter time doubled. So that's what we want to do is facilitate, help facilitate the owner. Do not lose another season. That's, that's the elephant in the room.
Then we have to push up the, the approval of the secondary plan.
Well, but he, but he can do a lot as long as he knows that this is at least where the road is going to go. He can do a lot this summer without putting a road in. He can do a lot of site, a lot of material moving, all kinds of shuffling of things around before. The reality is that this summer, there will not be asphalt on that road. That's for sure. It'll be lucky that it's, he'll be a good season if it's actually drivable this season. That's the reality, I think. So anyway, that's, I'd hate to see another season to kick to him.
Changes and are the mover and the. Secondary, okay.
I don't have an issue with, but eventually there are going to be roads. It, it doesn't say it has to be that there, eventually there has to be stuff moved. Eventually things, roads do need to go in. Nothing's going to be done before June anyway. Like they're not going to, there's no possible way they can build a road before June. Just making sure because. So I guess you could put eventual would be the only word that I could add, but I mean, it would be. That is what they're doing. They're preparing for.
We said to, to prepare for future road construction. Sure, I think you can. It is on the floor and the suggestion has been that we will vote on this motion depending where that goes. We have another one at the ready. Deputy Mayor. Question? Yes, we do. Yes, we have that. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed. That's defeated. I'm wondering if anybody has another motion that they would like to Deputy Mayor.
I would like to work on another motion.
Okay. I think we're just changing a few words from the original one. And I would suggest so that council approved communicating the closure of the compost site by the end of May twenty twenty-three. To prepare for, and here's where we might need a little help. To prepare for future road construction in the East End development area. As per the secondary plan, to prepare for future road construction. And then the same, and then in consistent with the secondary.
I, I would just like to. Have a date and I, I would vote propose like June or June third, something like that.
People use the compost site on a Saturday.
I would like the site be closed Saturday or.
Well, Saturday, June the third is a, is a Saturday.
After that, so by Monday, June fifth.
Yeah, so last date, last date, June third. Yeah, so last date, last date, June third.
June third. I, I just think it's, I think people would appreciate.
Read that?
Okay, um. I would move the council approved communicating the closure of the compost site. Uh, on.
Say last day. Saturday, June third.
On the last day, Saturday, June third, twenty twenty three. Um, to facilitate preparation. For road construction in the east end development era, era, area. Consistent with the.
East end.
Eastern secondary plan. Is that okay?
You get that Laura? Who has a second or councillor Ingham, is there any more discussion? Okay, question, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that one passes. Nice job. Yes.
Uh, Devon, you, you had mentioned before that maybe another motion would be appropriate, I don't think right now. Um, but do you think that with the PAC meeting coming up, that it makes sense for council to consider, at least in principle, the location of the road network and dive into that? Or should that just be part of? The bigger package and just ask them for your thoughts, because you mentioned that earlier when we were trying to work through the motion.
Yeah, I wrote down in huge letters in my notebook, uh, maybe we should bring another motion and we have some time over the next month. And bring it straight to council.
PAC and then to council, yeah.
I think um. From what I was understanding from the concerns, I think that would really help. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry.
Does that make sense to bring out of, so we have a PAC meeting coming up. There's not a lot about the east end, but we could pull a motion through PAC coming to council at the beginning of May, we would approve the road network in principle. Yeah, okay, great.
Sounds good.
Thank you, want a clarity on that.
That's great, thank you, thank you, everyone. Alright, it's uh twelve, eleven forty two. We'll try and get through the WBDC agreement. And who is going to do that? Thank you.
I'll be, I'll be really brief, because I think Kelly and the other folks here did a really great job. Um, but just uh for everyone's information, so I've been working with the WBDC for the last number of years, and we've held over the agreements. With interim agreements. Um, that's not ideal. From certainly from my seat, just, just in terms of pure administrative time to draw up new agreements and. Kind of do this review every year, so. Uh, within the funding policy, there's a review procedure which we followed, and we've included that feedback. Uh, in the package as well. Um, I don't think there's anything that really jumps out that is needing to be highlighted. Um, and just to keep in mind that the last couple of years working with the WBDC has obviously been really challenging, I thought they were pretty ambitious coming out of. Um, what was a strategic planning exercise to try to bring them together a bit more, opening an office? And then they couldn't really do a whole lot, um, and I'm sure. The two counselors that have um been on that board will say more about this. Um, but I think the big win from my seat has been sort of uh. Better defining the lanes a bit more, so I think they're using the same language as we're using, talking about marketing and member support on their side. And us talking about the broader, you know, economic development, setting the scene, um, doing the things that the town does well. Um, so yeah, the motion is there uh in terms of the funding, and then I just, the last thing I just wanted to say was um. We didn't want to move straight into this business licensing until this was resolved, but that is something that we want to bring forward uh soon. Um, and I think there's agreement from the WBDC that that's a really useful tool, we struggled. Um, unfortunately, to know exactly who all of our members are, uh, just the nature of assessment and how that flows through. Um, so yeah, I think that'll be really positive to bring forward and, and sort of build on all of this, so that, that's all from, from me, thank you.
Uh, I would move the committee of the whole follow. Forward the following motion to council for decision. That council approve entering into a three-year funding agreement with the Wolfhold Business Development Corporation as outlined in this report. RFT zero one five dash twenty twenty three.
Seconded by deputy mayor, are there any questions? Question, all in favor of.
Thank you, and just quickly, uh, and as well can Devon American reiterate or, or. Add to it, 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 I found this uh strategic plan actually refreshing, it was really well done when they brought it, they spent two days doing it. They came, when they did it, I was like, that actually really aligned with our strategic plan. Uh, maybe that was planned, I let that, I didn't go to those, I said, I feel like I should just stay back and let them do their thing first. Um, but they, they're really focused on the things they're supposed to be focused on, they seem to really want to communicate with us and work well with us. Um, they're really interested in getting the business license, licensing going, um, they think it would help them, one, know who their members are. And also to get those surveys so that they can do better, they really are interested in that feedback, and if they're, if the survey was part of the licensing, like every year you have to. Renew and then do the survey, that would be most helpful for them, they really want to gather that data, which I think is a nice, you know. Over years, it's been maybe sometimes challenging, but this seems to be really working as a, as a nice partnership. They're really interested in our parks plan, our accessibility, our climate change, so I think they're on the same page as us, and I think it's been a. It'll be exciting to see what they do in the next little bit, but they seem to be really focused on the things that they're doing now, so.
Yes, um, I, I would agree with everything that councillor McKay has said, and I, I think one of the. Challenges that I see them overcoming very well is the whole notion of member support. Um, because I think if you look back to when the WBDC was created, um, there was no online, you know, there, there, the member support. Tended to focus a lot on marketing promotion collectively. Um, and also to the downtown, um, you know, businesses that had fronts. Um, storefrontages, I think one of the things that they've done really well is to look at. A modern marketing and um uh. Way of, of, of doing promotion, but also the whole focus on workshops and. Uh, lunch and learn type of things and bringing in experts that will allow all businesses, whether they have a. A visible, you know, storefront or not, um, because they really recognize. The variety, the whole range of businesses that they are, that are there, so I, I think they've done a really good job of. Uh, you know, looking at who we are, who we support, who's our business community, that whole diversity, and. Um, I think this is a, a very, very positive. Move forward, because I think we all recognize how important it is for us as a community. To have a very healthy and vibrant business. Uh, community in, in our town, and so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm. Have no reservations about supporting this, and I think they really deserve a lot of credit.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that's passed, so we have twelve minutes till noon, lunch is here, um. Do you think that? We could be, I think the next two will be quite quick, so. And uh, Jody, I'm gonna ask councillor McKay. Like the alternate on the IMSA, uh, Aaron, did you want to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just hit a couple things really quickly, so the KTA budget, so it's an operational ask of. Two hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-one, that's about sixty-eight hundred more than what we had in the budget, manageable from our perspective. It includes a ten percent increase in fare revenue, um, as if you read the package, you'll know, um, fares are rebounding, but they're still not where they were. Pre-COVID, so that is a concerning trend, and we're hoping that they will continue to increase. Um, they're increasing their mechanics from two to three, hoping to save money by doing that. They also don't expect to get any more one-time operating grants that were tied to COVID, so they have to make up that revenue elsewhere, which tends to fall on municipalities. The GM, they don't have budget for a full year, we're not even sure that will get filled this year, that's kind of tied to the IMSA work. They are gonna share a fifty-fifty finance director with Valley Waste, which is great, that's sort of the first step in some of the uh changes structurally, so that's. Awesome, salaries are up six point two eight percent. Um, fuel is projected at the same usage as twenty twenty-three, so you know, there's nothing really that jumps out in the budget. Um, that I think we need to flag, I will note that going forward, a lot of the budgetary impacts will be dictated by the transit study that will happen. And that will get posted this week, and it will close at the end of April, so that phase one work will start um fairly quickly, so really looking forward to that. Um, yeah, so I think, uh, I think that's all that I would highlight with my director McLean hat on. Tell him that, that you did a great job, he wasn't here.
Uh, I would move, uh, excuse me, I would move that committee of the whole forward the following motion to council for decision. That council approved the King's Transit Authorities twenty twenty-three twenty-four operating and capital budgets.
I'll second. Councillor Butler, are there any questions of Aaron, I guess? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, so that's passed, and Valley Waste.
So this one is one where um, the budget hasn't increased all that much year to year, but our portion is increasing quite significantly, thirteen percent. And primarily that's driven from the formula, so we go up almost one percent in terms of our share because of our growth in population. Um, so there's, yeah, you'll, you'll see that on a couple of friends, but particularly um, for us. The Valley Waste budget is up five point six percent over last year, and Mike did make a note that the budget spreadsheet compares budget to forecast. And not budget to budget, so if you are trying to look for that comparison, just to note that. Um, mentioned about our UA drives us up, so we're actually nine point eight five percent of the total budget now. So we'll see a thirteen percent increase or seventy-five thousand more as a result. Um, the budget's reasonable, they do project that tipping fees across the board are gonna go up to help offset some of the increasing pressures. Um, they also have tended to have a surplus at the end of every year, and so while we didn't quite budget for this amount of increase in our just approved. Budget in March, uh, we do expect to get about fifty thousand back from the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year as part of the surplus that pretty much is a race. Is that impact, so we do feel that it's manageable within the operating budget that we have. Um, so just a couple key highlights, um, Annapolis County is coming back in as a full-service customer this fiscal year, they are not a partner. Any sort of structural change will depend on what happens with the IMSA work, but they actually want to go back to like the. The educational pieces and some of the other um elements of the Valley Waste Service that they hadn't fully subscribed to, they will now be, yeah, they will now be a full customer. Um, there is some movement on their collection contracts, um, and processing contracts, up or down, mostly up with pressures with. Uh, cost of living, um, their insurance is going up by twenty percent, that's a big driver that you see in a lot of municipal type of environments. Um, they actually have pared down some of their employees, so their employee costs overall are actually down, just under fifty, like around fifty-seven hundred dollars. Um, they're very similar to KTA, six point eight percent increase for their staff, but they've streamlined the staff that they have, and they're going to do that cost sharing. Position with King's Transit, which is helpful, I should note here, we're still sitting on that equipment reserve policy, if you remember back to the budget discussions. Last year, there was discussion about having a half million dollar equipment reserve policy in place. That was pending board discussion, still hasn't made it to the board, um, it will go at the next IMSA meeting. And if it does pass, we'll come back with a supplementary budget request to address that one-off, um, so you're not approving that today. That will come back under separate cover. And I think that's, those are the big, the big pieces.
Councillor McKay?
I would move that committee of the whole forward the following motion to council for decision. That council approved the Valley Waste Resource Management Authorities twenty twenty-three twenty-four operating and capital budgets.
Secondary councillor Elliot? Uh, any discussion? Anybody else have any special? Of, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that's passed, alright, that brings us to almost noon, uh, food is here. We will take a break, what's a reasonable break? Half an hour? An hour, so uh, we will be back here at twelve thirty. Uh, it's beautiful day, probably eat out on the porch. Uh, so uh, council is adjourned until, in recess until twelve thirty. Cue computer. You're like saying, computer? Mike will know. Very nice, you even got the song, did you start to sing the Star Trek song? So in, so simpatico. Okay, um, we, we're not doing the water utility rate study, so Acadia Town MOU, I'll pass that over to the CFO.
So thanks for your patience on this, we've been working through the town and gown over the past year to go through the review process for the MOU. So the current MOU that we have, that I did include a copy of in the package, um, came into effect in October of twenty eighteen. And per the MOU, it's to be formally reviewed every four years, so twenty-two, twenty-three was the first year of review since we've signed it. So a little bit of learning um along the way in terms of, I think, how to effectively do a review in the future, but we got there. So for our part, the town did have a special committee of the whole meeting in September to really talk about. What we wanted to get out of the MOU, what had worked, what hadn't, I took that information and compiled it into a short report that I also attached in the package. For your benefit, um, from the minutes and discussion of that meeting to share with the town and gown committee to help inform where we ended up. Uh, Acadia and ASU had a bit more informal processes, a little bit different than ours, but in, I guess it was February. They were able to share some of their feedback as well, so the town and gown did get the benefit of all three parties coming to the table. Um, as part of the review process to do a bit of a report card. So, um, really the bulk of the work that town and gown has done on this has been in the last couple of months, there's been a lot of meetings and check-ins and back and forth. On what you see in front of you, so I just want to hit a couple of the highlights, I do think that it reflects the discussion that you had in September, so. Um, that's always good to see, so just to start, what you'll notice is there's no specific deliverables in it. So that was intentional, and there's a process defined in the implementation section now, that a joint annual work plan will be prepared. Every year that we'll get into specifics on what we're gonna do to operationalize the three strategic areas that are in the MOU. The problem with the one from twenty eighteen, I've said this before, is we wanted deliverables, so folks would look at it and say they're gonna do something with this, it's not just gonna sit on a shelf. But the moment we had those deliverables put in, some of them were irrelevant, like the next day, new priorities came in, or. Some of them just weren't feasible, so it gets dated very quickly, so having that um robust process every year to really hone in on what's effective. And what we need to do together is an improvement. Um, the other piece that I think is really important, and it was one that council discussed, was that all of the financial ask pieces are gone. So in our current MOU, it specifies, you know, the town will contribute to Acadia in a number of different ways. Um, those have been removed, we have budgeted for this fiscal year that we're in now, the status quo with Acadia. And the intention would be that sometime in the fall, before we get into our budget process, we'll come back to council with another. Draft agreement between just the town and Acadia, and what that could look like, that doesn't have to be embedded in the MOU, and particularly because the ASU is not really. Part of that discussion, anyway, so that's gone. Um, so a couple of the other key changes, we've added um two new principles. Overall, folks really did like the principles, they resonated with the whole group, there were a couple tweaks. Um, and the whole sort of principle of sustainability got embedded into the principles, that was something that was important um from all parties. But we've added to one, um, specifically dealing with EDI, so timely discussion. And the other specifically dealing with the duty, and I'll use the word duty, for the parties to not just communicate, but to collaborate and consult. On any decisions that might impact the other, so that's been added. And I think that the group spent a lot of time on that one, that was really important to the town and gown committee. So those were the changes to the principles, we're down from what was six strategic goals to three, one's focused on economic development. One's focused on facility, infrastructure and environment, and one is focused on what we're calling community wellness. So the community wellness bucket includes the community harmony pieces, but also includes things like food security, housing. And those components that really make, will fill in a key, a safe, vibrant, healthy community, so that's a change. And then we've, we've tried to beef up the area on implementation, so. We've clarified that the meetings are open to the public, we've allowed for that process to identify the annual um work plan process. We've allowed for the creation of working groups, and really what's, that's intended to do is we realized through this process that there's a lot of folks. Within our organizations that don't know that the MOU exists for one. And for two, probably should be involved with both informing what we should be doing, but also doing the work. And so creating working groups where it makes sense to help say, this is what's important to do for the upcoming year, but then also to be tasked to say, okay, you're, you're the doers. Let's, let's be involved and get it done, so that's a change, and I think that will be really effective. Might be a little bit messy this first year, as we're trying to figure out what working groups we need and who should be populating them, but. Um, I think it would allow more hands on deck and get more engagement from all of us. So that's in there, very clearly articulating the meetings are open to the public, they can be hybrid. And, you know, we heard you loud and clear. And, you know, we heard you loud and clear, meeting two times a year is not enough. So we're going to meet quarterly. So those, those were the big changes. The MOU will still be reviewed formally every four years, but we're going to do a check-in every two, just to make sure we're on track. And, and I think, I think all in all, we landed in a good space. There's two SOPs that were included for your information. You don't need to approve those. Those can sit with town and gown and be changed as needed. But it was just intended to let you know how the working groups would work and how the administrative leads would work. That is the other change. In the existing MOU, it specifies job titles. So the CAO and basically Chris Callback's position are the two that support the committee. We just define them as administrative leads and each party can identify who's most appropriate. So it's not always tied just to those two individuals. So those are the main changes. So at last week, so this was a late addition to the agenda. I didn't get it till Thursday because it's hot off the press. Town and gown did meet and supported moving this forward to the parties and approved the draft. So it's here in front of you for your consideration. I don't know if anyone from town again wants to weigh in, but yeah, it feels good to be at this point.
Counselor McKay?
Yeah, I would just echo Erin's comments. I think we spent a lot of time going through it, the collaborative coop, communication, collaboration and consultation was huge for us as a discussion point and how that would work out. I, I, I think hopeful that this is going to be with taking all the specifics out is going to be a good working document. I think it gives us some good oversight, but it will be interesting to see how that goes out the first year for sure and get everybody in place. But we get to come back and approve the, the work plan. So, you know, council is involved in those as well. So it's not complete, even though the meetings are only quarterly, there'll be a work plan in place. So the meetings will be just check-ins, but the, the staff will do the, the heavy lifting on most of it. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a really good starting point for sure. I hope that all of the organizations have the people power to put the efforts in where it's needed to be because everybody has, you know, their jobs off their desk, their normal jobs. Hopefully these things are on your desk. Anyway, I think we said that anyway, but hopefully the time commitment will be, will be there for all parties to get some good results.
Yes, it was, I think it, I think ultimately it, we got to where we want to be. I'm happy with the working groups. So however, those are determined. I think some of the key ones like housing is where we really do need the university and the town and the ASU to be together, think their way through that would be certainly one I would hope that we would see, but and economic development, obviously. If that, if those are the ones that I'm just suggesting that I think those are, those are key for us. And yes, I, I like the idea of the kind of, and I think this came from accessibility, but the idea of a report card and, and a check-in, I think that's a good process. So that was also written into it. I don't have the motion in front of me and.
Can I, can, can you open it up to the rest?
I am. Motion on the floor.
Okay.
Actually, I give it to Jody Hasen.
I would move that committee of the whole forward the following motion to council for decision. That council approved the attached MOU between the town of Wolfville, Academy University and the Acadia Students Union and authorized the mayor and CAO to execute the agreement.
Secondary?
I'll second that.
Councillor Ngam. Now I open up to questions.
You had two of you went and I was like, what about the rest? Yeah. So I did attend one of the meeting and I just wanted to thank Erin and Ian. You did a lot of heavy lifting in this. And, and when I attended the meeting, you were talking about working groups and I was really for the working groups. So I do have one question. I know that you haven't sort of defined how they're going to look. But the working groups, just my, out of my, should be well communicated if we're, we're going to have different members that are going to representing them. And so the working groups, you'd still have all the three parties involved. You'd want to have somebody from ASU, from Acadia and the town to be a part of these working groups. And would there be sip, specific topics that you are like, you know, that you're going to bring forward to there? Yeah. So some might be more, I thought that was not, some might be more general in nature, like say we have an economic development one that could continue on more than one year and they could work on more than one file. And it would consist of ASU, Acadia, town reps, but could also consist of folks from the WBDC or the Kenful Research Station, or, you know, there's a list of, of organizations that might help support that work, even though they aren't one of the three parties. Or we could have one that's very specific. I'll just throw an example. So say food security, maybe it has more of a defined start and end date. Again, having the members from all three parties sitting at the table, but you could bring in other subject matter experts to support or do the work as well. So each one's going to be a little different. Once we get them established, then those working groups can help feed into, okay, do they need to continue? What are the important things for us to work on collectively for the upcoming year and then go away and do the work? And if their work wraps up, then we'll terminate that group and probably start another one to work on the next priority. But some of them, I think, once we get them started, it'll make sense to keep them indefinitely. The faces might change a little bit, but there'll be some continuity. So will they be well communicated? Like, like if somebody is an expert in a certain area, but you didn't think of them, would that be communicated on our website as possible, looking for people or? Yeah, we need to figure out what that looks like. I think what we'll do is probably start internal to identify, okay, within our three organizations and the ASU can tap into students. It doesn't have to necessarily be an ASU representative. Yes, exactly. Yeah. Yeah. To try to identify, okay, which staff do we need to start with? And then probably even those staff to help identify, okay, in your network is who are the other folks that need to be here? So we'll define that process a little bit better as we get going, but we certainly want to make sure we get the right people at the table. Just like as a sidebar, last night I went to diversity meeting in TANV came. And the input that she provided from Acadia was invaluable. And so I could just see, like, I'm hoping that is a stronger component that, you know, that, that is going to be worked into this, the working group, because I can just see how that's going to meld really well. And it's something that I feel like is missing that, that, that voice. So that's all I wanted to say.
Yes, thank, I just have a question and I, I, I'm afraid it might be a little too much into the weeds, but I, I really like the way, the direction this is going in. I really appreciate the fact that we're increasing the meeting frequency and, and a lot definitely has been, been heard and this whole idea of having specific working groups. But I'm wondering about the point around mutual consultation on things that affect each other. Thinking of, you know, exceptional circumstances like COVID and going back to that example we discussed before of the grounds being cut off to the community. Is that something that would fall within this MOU? Like I, I'm curious about the reach of the MOU and you know, how, how, how deep through the organization this would actually be applied.
So certainly you need buy-in from the top leadership to really embody that through the organization. But your example was the one that actually got used in the discussion with town and gown to say when the decision was made by Acadia to close campus to anyone that wasn't affiliated with Acadia. That should have been a discussion with the town on the front end because it did impact our residents quite significantly. And at the end of the day, maybe the decision still would have been the decision, but we would have been part of the discussion to say, here's our concerns, here's our feedback, and we could have helped communicate the message. Conversely, if there was something that the town was doing that would have an impact on Acadia, like you need to have that dialogue. So I think it will be further reaching if we can get the folks in those leadership roles to think about it. Intentionally think about it when big decisions are being made to be able to turn the lens on and go, okay, I really need to stop here and talk to the other parties before we get too far. And that will be a cultural shift. But the intention is that that would be embodied throughout the organizations.
Questions or comments? Pensive, Ian.
Well, who, so the existing president clearly signs this.
So this is going to their board of directors in April. So Dr. Ricketts will still be the president when this is signed. This is something that's certainly been communicated to the board of governors rep currently on the town and gown and even as part of the search committee for the, for the new president, that this document's really important to the town. And so I think we've expressed it'd be our hope is probably the wrong word, our expectation that this would be embraced by the new president's very important document. And having that board of governor rap on town again is really helpful because it connects to the governors, not just to that one president position.
I think that's key, but I think you nailed it. It's really, it's, it's a top-down idea. It's not, it's not in the weeds. It's, it's top-down for the if it doesn't come from the top management, that's never going to happen. It's that simple.
There was a, and I assume there will be a signing event. I know the last time, the last time we had the signing event, it happened when the board of governors were here because as I recall, they were upstairs meeting and they came down to the garden room. So what date did you say they were?
I don't think we have a date. Yeah, they, they're at the end of April. So maybe that's a date that will aim for. We've, ASU also has to go through their process and didn't have a date. I think we're the first ones out of the gates. So I'll circle back with Ian and Sadie and try to see what date it would be. But yeah, likely makes sense to do it when the board's here.
Not all, many of council were there as well for that signing event. So we'll try and get a date. Other questions or comments? Are we ready for the, when Counselor Elliott?
Yeah, just, I just want to thank Erin for all the hard work because it's been a thorn in your side. What a while. So I'm glad to see it resolving.
Now are we ready for the question? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that is passed. All right. To Tanvi, we have moved this report a little bit, no, a little bit later in the agenda. So we're not doing it right now. We're going to first. I just didn't, if you had the agenda, I didn't want you to think what happened to this report. We are going to go through the, which will be quick, the committee reports external. And if there's any public here, which I don't see for public input, and then we will do, get to your report. So we are at committee reports external. Counselor Butler, anything to add on King's point to point?
No, ask a minute.
And any questions of Counselor Butler? Counselor McKay will fill business development corporation. Anything to add?
Just wanted to highlight, and I think this came up in our MOU discussion, but just to follow up to some of the cheating cup things too. When Tanya Coleman from events Acadia was at the WBDC and I did highlight it here, they are actively planning events on campus for homecoming. And she said that they will be much more elaborate, not like, not just lawn games and the things that have been sort of a little more passive before, but really trying to get people, get the students to stay on campus and not on our streets. So I think that was a really good first, even though the MOU isn't signed yet, that was a really good first step and really that we are listening to, they are listening and we're hearing each other. And so I just wanted to highlight that one piece that was informed after, especially after the chicken call.
Questions of Counselor McKay? Counselor Ngam, diversity Kings, anything to add?
It's always, I always have diversity meeting right before a committee, the whole, sometimes like, so it was last night I got home. I guess we got home at eight. So Tanvi joined me. Like I said before, and it was great to hear the perspective from Acadia, like really people were really interested in that. But I just want to highlight, this is the first time that they're actually celebrating Gaelic Nova Scotia Month. So they're actually going to read their proclamation and have somebody in Gaelic read it. This is the first time and they're also having May is also Asian Heritage Month. And there is going to be a Chinese cultural event at Al Whittle, but I don't have the date on that yet. So I'll let Barb know or she can find out and we could advertise that. I think that's, that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Counselor Ngam? The IMSA for Valley Waste and King's Transit have nothing to add. If there are any questions? And Counselor Elliott, Grand Prairie and Bishop Beck with Marsh, Marsh Bodies. That's quite a mouthful. Anything to add?
I'm sure there would be more as time progresses.
Okay. Okay. And any questions of Counselor Elliott? All right. And would there be, we don't have, of course, anybody online because we are not online. And I do not see anybody in the audience for public input. So we will now move to the info report, EDI results and discussion. We're going to treat this just as a, it's an information report as a bit of a workshop, questions and so on. And I will say that it's, we have about seventy minutes. Which time at two o'clock, we need to go in camera. If we're not finished the discussion, we will make a decision to come back after our in-camera discussion. So Tanvi and Barb, if you are ready, just take it away.
We are going to turn our mics on. Thank you. You can turn on yours, too. Good afternoon, Mayor Donovan, through you to council and to staff. I'm really excited to be here today with Ton B. This has been an incredibly fast, fast project, fast timeline. I think we've given Ton B. A little bit of a false conception of how quickly government works by starting this off with a ten-week examination of equity, diversity and inclusion. So we're going to run you through some slides. There's lots of opportunities to jump in. This is really meant to bring back some information, the findings that we, we kind of went through together in this exploration and give council an opportunity to kind of sit with the information, not feel rushed or pushed into any kind of decision-making at this point. This is new to us and, and it's valuable to enter into it with a sense of humility and curiosity and also to basically remind folks that this is, this is a safe space and we really want to treat it that way, especially with the subject matter. That's it. We're done. Here we go. So our starting point and, and Ton B, I would say was further ahead than I was on some of this early learning. So when this, when this all came together in December, the, the request was to start this exploration and to bring back some information before we had made decisions on the budget. So we didn't quite hit it, but there was, there was some, some dollar amount kind of included in the budget. But it was really an opportunity. Erin and I jumped into it immediately to say, we've got a very short period of time. We need to get our local perspective. We've got approval to have somebody help us with this process. Who the heck? And I think we both left the meeting and we were both driving home and we contacted each other later. It was like, oh my gosh, I wonder if Ton B is available. And we had, we had met Ton B through some of the community harmony work, which of course now is going to be known as community wellness. And it was just a great opportunity. Let's see. Oh, hi Devon. It was a great opportunity to really connect with Ton B, not only to get the Acadia perspective, but Ton B has lived experience coming to Wolfville as somebody who didn't know much about it before and having that international student experience, which is such an important part of our understanding go forward. So all of the, the definitions of equity, diversity and inclusion are slightly different. There's lots of different stuff to unpack. I, I enjoyed doing an awful lot of reading about this. In very basic terms, we're considering equity again as fair access opportunity and support for all people. Diversity is our, our differences, right? Most of us here had the opportunity to do our session last year with Bradley Shepherd. And I was really, I was really inspired by his description of diversity and that it's, it's all of the, the many different components that we have experienced throughout our lives that make us unique individuals. It's not one thing and we are all diverse human beings. And so really the understanding is how can we comfortably acknowledge that, see that and be present with that? And then inclusion is about creating a genuine sense of belonging and that leads to value, right? So do you want to add your, your piece that you, the inclusion piece, which was so meaningful? Ton B ran in today with this, so I, I want to invite her to share this additional kind of unpacking of inclusion.
It was yesterday in the King's Diversity Meeting where one of the members said that it's not inclusion if you're just merely inviting people to your events unless you make an intentional choice to change the existing layout for them to be genuinely feeling that they belong there. So I think that's very important.
I love that. Thank you. So when we look at EDI, and I'm going to step back from plain language and, and call it EDI, and I hope you'll, you'll be okay with that. And when we talk about EDI, we often talk about using it as a lens. And what I want for folks to take away today is really the sense of, let's really start to focus on inclusion and how we create inclusion that will lead to that sense of belonging and value. So when we use EDI as a framework, it builds better environments where people feel safe, respected, engaged and connected. In governance, that means better decision-making. That's going to deliver better results for diverse members of our community. In a workspace, it just means people can work to a higher standard, to a higher level. So EDI is action when we support, acknowledge and include. And I always like to add some symbols and from all of the kind of unpacking I did about this, I really felt that infinity sign was a good thing. I really felt that infinity sign was a good thing to start with, if that's a piece that people can take away and remember. Because it's never just one piece. All of these pieces constantly work together. So here's an example. And, and using, you know, perks planning as an example, because we're in the midst of our Parks and Open Spaces master plan. So if we really want to include people and help them feel that they are, you know, an important part of the process and that they're going to take value from that process, we first have to think about how all of the folks who might contribute to that process are different. What makes them different? And then the equity piece plugs in from the understanding of, with all of these different pieces or all these different people in our community, what can we do to help them have a better opportunity to actually engage with the process? So is that how we issue an invitation? Is that the platforms that we use to communicate? Is it having multiple different opportunities? Is it, you know, providing online? Is it providing in-person? Inevitably, we have to understand people are different and we need to provide different supports representing equity so that everybody can feel included and take value away. So let's pause there for a moment. How does that land as just kind of a first step?
It makes perfect sense to me. The way you explained it is, is, is what I think, well, I'll speak for myself, it's what I want. It's what I want to do and it's what I try to do in whatever hobbies or whatever, I, I try to make it as inclusive of everyone, thinking about who I'm working with and who is going to be participating in the process. And it's a lot to, you know, the checkbox of what you need to do, it, it's a lot. And then in the end, you may have forgotten something, but acknowledging that you forgot it and knowing that it's something you can work towards is also a good step as well. So I loved everything about the support. Carry on.
So this was some of the, the learning that I enjoyed early on when Tanvi and I sat down and started going through how we were going to actually get this work to, to come together. And our early conversations were a lot of story sharing, talking about experiences. Really a lot of, you know, Tanvi's experience coming to Wolfville, coming to Acadia, what she had experienced, her connections, a lot of good narrative. And again, there was that piece that kept coming up, which I would say be humble, but really being comfortable with being uncomfortable and being comfortable with saying the wrong thing. So many of us worry about, you know, stepping into something. And it's okay because that's how we move forward. So that's, that's cool.
Yeah. So question, so I, I love the infinity symbol because that actually makes really good sense because it's a continuum of work inside ourselves. So I, I really like that. What I, what I'm curious about is, so if just something that you said, like, so if we, if you invite someone to something and then say you're giving remarks or doing whatever, and you say, oh, welcome to the community of our African associations or whomever. Is that appropriate? Like, is that, is that a signal them a certain people's out? Or is that okay to say that's welcoming to make them feel included? And then if you forget someone, what, what, what do you do? Because I'm always, I, I, I always don't single people out, one, because I'm not sure if that's appropriate. And two, if I miss someone, then I always feel bad. Does that make sense? That was, it was a question, but, but I don't know, because I don't, because of the uncomfortableness, I never know what to do.
Yeah, and, and I think the answer is really. But I, I think at least what I've taken away after this exploration comes down to, there is no right answer. But the more that we use this lens and the more we practice targeting in and, and really focusing on how can we make more people feel included so they take meaning? We're going to make mistakes, we're going to screw up and just getting really comfortable with, I'm going to make an effort. Because I think fear is the barrier that so many of us face on a regular basis. And, and we'll get back to this further on, but I will say, I think the challenge of the lack of participation, sometimes from, from a more traditional Wolfville resident in this conversation was fear and, and feeling, I shouldn't weigh in on this, I don't have anything to offer. And if I do, I'm going to say the wrong thing. So training helps with that. Having conversations, again, Tanvi was so good with me. It also helps having a young Acadia student around who just has that different perspective and has lived it, you know, through EDI really being a lens through so much of what's happening now on the campus. But really removing that fear and just, yeah, I think we have to be fearless in our approach.
I had my head this way, Counsel Ingam and then the Deputy Mayor.
Can I just add to that? Um, I also feel like if you have privilege, acknowledging that and if you're learning, also depends on which you're addressing, but also acknowledging that I'm new to this. And if I make a mistake, please correct me. That also creates a sense of like, the other person knows that you had made an effort out of your normal routine to go and learn. And it's okay, like everyone makes mistakes. So I think that creates that safe space for them as well to correct you if they can, because a lot of times when authority figures are speaking, others don't feel like, if they even are saying something wrong, not everyone feels comfortable in correcting them. So I think that beginning piece sometimes helps.
Yeah, I mean, it comes back to, you have to, you know, be comfortable with being uncomfortable, right? So you sort of face these, you know, sometimes you're like, should I say it or shouldn't I? And I think your intention, if your intentions are good, and it's okay if somebody sort of corrects you because if they know you and you've built this relationship with somebody, they're comfortable enough to say, this is how it is or this. And you're like, oh, sorry, I didn't know. And that's sort of how the dialogue goes. But I think it's better to say something just so you get the dialogue going sometimes and not sort of be afraid. But talking to, you know, everybody's going to make mistakes, like whether they're, you know, from the African Canadian community or, or whatever community they're from. We're all going to, we all have our unconscious biases and so we, we just need to, to acknowledge that. And like Tanvi said, you know, acknowledge the privilege that comes along with being, you know, white, right?
I, I just, I, I wanted to say, I appreciate you starting with the position of inclusion and working back from that, because I think that that's ultimately where, where we want to get. And what I've gleaned from what we're discussing and what was in the report is that we're starting off really at the point of communication that we haven't really gone beyond communication. So this is about how do we make people feel included when we're either addressing them or we're talking about potential projects, say as from a town perspective, that we want to be as inclusive eventually in our design. And that really it is about language at this point. I, I'm not sure that we've gone any further than the actual processes. Is that correct?
Yeah, for, yeah, I think for the most part.
Because I think, you know what I mean, it's just, it, there's so much to unpack with all of these. And I think eventually what we're, what I think we're trying to do is arrive at points of shared commonality. That it is important absolutely to recognize differences and to just expect, respect people for who they are. Whether it's a cultural community or a language community or diversity that exists in the same family. Because not all, as an only child, I'm only assuming that not all siblings are the same and share the same values and share the same perspectives. So, you know, the whole, the spectrum of diversity is so complex. As is the spectrum of things like privilege, which exists within every group regardless of many things. And I think as we try to create that level of understanding and really respectful communication that is not denigrating or alienating, but rather the opposite, that, that recognizes that. And as we move forward to what I see as a common understanding. But I just wanted to clarify that at this point, and I think this is the most difficult stage, it is the communication stage so that we're not alienating each other or other people because of our words and our language. But I think, once we do that, the next step for me would be to kind of determine how our processes become inclusive, which I think is a very, very difficult, you know, next step. But I, I guess when I was reading this, it was more in terms of a phased-in approach where we're looking at EDI at this level in, in those terms. So I just want to know if I'm, if that's a fair assumption or, I'm, I'm looking for guidance here. I just wanted to get that, but. But that's a reasonable.
Yeah, and I, I think that a lot of, a lot of this has been, you know, going out, asking questions, listening to responses, presenting them in a way to counsel with the hopes that even some of it can be absorbed. Every piece that we've brought to you is going to land differently with each of you. So again, creating the space of inclusion right now, this work is going to mean absolutely different things to each one of you. So our job is to provide answers and different things along the way to help us feel, at least by the end of this, that you're all part of this, you have the ability to do something with it and that it's meaningful and valuable. So I'm going to jump into our approach here, which, and we've done some updates to council, so this isn't a complete shock. But again, ten weeks, we are not consultants. Tanvi gave us the hours that she could, but this is, I'm, I'm really proud of the work that came out of this based on, on those constraints and, and those capacity realities. The other thing is too, in how we're presenting this back to you, keeping in mind that we were still writing while Tanvi was still in her ten weeks. We didn't know the ending of this story. We still don't, because really it's just the first chapter, if, if only the first paragraph. And we wanted to, again, give a report that captured both of our voices and also presented in a somewhat plain language way. So you did not get a fifty-page report, you're welcome. So you're welcome, Wendy. So our, our work included one-on-one interviews, staff surveys, council interviews, community surveys, community engagement sessions. Tanvi had a lot of one-on-one conversations with some of the folks she was connected to. And again, all of it, we were kind of going through this pretty expected questions, you know, who are you? What, what are the barriers that you face? What are the supports that can be provided? Where would you like to start and, and what would make you feel more included? And this was a picture of Tanvi from our first session at the market, which was a good, good experience to be there, I will say. And one of the nicest things was we arrived there on a very stormy morning and I wanted to provide some feedback from Kelly, who manages the market here in Wolfville. And she, she had cards for us. It was just, it was such a great example of what it was that we were searching for to, to go and find that from, from the market. And that was wonderful. So Tanvi handled this part, really dealing with staff, and it was, it was fairly confidential and she met with most of you. And so as we go forward through the report at this point, really it's just what we heard in very simple terms, taking, you know, this really broad sense of, everybody said similar things in very different ways. We've tried to synthesize it somewhat. So that's why I go forward, you're going to see these, what we heard and will identify the source, so internally, meaning in this case, staff and council. And then what we can do, and this is, the what we can do is a very simple, what we can do, any of these, if you choose to continue, the what we do would need to come back as a work plan, right? Like, we're not just saying, here's a sentence, it'll be a surprise. We would really need to, to work that up further with a bit more time. So again, across the board, internally from staff and council, there was a sense of curiosity. People are interested, there's a willingness, a real passion and a real appetite. And we want training. We want, we want to know how we can kind of limit, kind of making these huge gaps, so to speak. So we've got a wonderful set of resources available that Tanvi has helped develop. A lot of online training opportunities, many are free, many are offered by third parties. And some of the themes are here, so things like understanding privilege, I, I, I really enjoyed that one. I did that early on and found it was just really, it expanded my perspective and, and brought me great, great humility. Unconscious bias trading, understanding and supporting gender diversity and how to work with abilities. And I'm, I'm happy to say that a large portion of our team have already created that, completed that one through the good work that the Accessibility Committee has been doing. So Mike McLean helped us get that completed over the past year. And I don't know if anybody wants to jump in here before I go to the next one. We're good? Thank you.
Feel free just to jump in, counsel, because I, I'm watching Barb, I can't see everybody's like.
So building a diverse team, and, and so this was, this really came from some of the external folks that we were chatting with. And this became a, a kind of one of those responses we saw often too. If, if the town could do one thing to increase kind of this sense of EDI, what would that be? And it really had to do with recruitment and hiring. And our hiring practices are, and again, full disclosure, most folks in this room are aware, but we don't have an HR specialist, we don't have an HR department, a lot of people find that surprising. We, we do the best that we can with the folks that are here. Hiring is important and, you know, our practices are pretty standardized. Recruitment is an area where we got a lot of feedback. So, you know, if we're putting something on Indeed and hoping to attract a diverse group of folks, is that a place to post it? So that, that requires a further kind of review and, and some, probably some feedback and advice from folks who are in that HR space. And then the other piece of that is, when we go out to hire, we really do look for folks with experience in, you know, the municipal space. And that's for very simple reasons, right? Like, we don't have an HR team to hire people. It takes a long time, as members of council know, it takes a long time to figure this all out. It can be even more confusing from a staffing perspective. But municipal space is not, like, it's a pretty unique specialized area. So we might need to look at that and to really open this up and to bring in a more diverse group of candidates to be considered. How do we recruit them and what are we asking for? Whatever, what are our expectations when folks come, come to join us? So that's definitely a piece that we can be working on. And that would be, that would be a staff piece.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Just on that, one thing we did talk about diversity is when they do tend to put out an advertisement for a job posting, they leave it on a little longer because it's known that groups of minorities may have to think about, am I going to be qualified for that job? So they take a little longer to decide if they're going to apply or not. That's a lens that they, they, as HR, just repeating that.
That's amazing feedback, yeah. Awesome.
I, I like this one as well. And, and I think it, it is from, you know, from your leadership points of view from Erin's. It's, you know, there are transferable skills from all sorts of different sectors. You know, you may not have worked in municipal services all of your life, but having those transferable skills to make sure, you know, it fits the job description, but it adds diversity in, in a different way. So certainly something to think about when looking at HR policies or new procedures or hiring and things like that. And, and, you know, that might be something we need some expertise on. That's not us, because we're not all HRs, we're experts as well. But yeah, that's a good.
So internal barriers. Again, back to the, the previous slide, government space is unique. And poor Tanvi, so many of the conversations that we were having throughout the course of this, you know, we, we started having conversations about, about housing or healthcare. And I was like, yeah, those are, those are really important big things, not necessarily our lane. And so really starting to. And so really starting to understand, um, we all speak a similar language, we have a good sense of what the rules are, we have comfort here. We have been working diligently to use plain language, we have been working diligently to present things in different ways. But at the same time, there's probably more that we can do to kind of give that behind the scenes understanding, uh, to folks. So, um, everything from when, uh, when folks are coming in to join us and and you would have seen staff doing this today, we had lots of guests joining us, making sure that those guests get a personalized greeting. Here's the washer. You can, and, and I love how Mayor Donovan walked into that quite eloquently, letting people know they don't have to stay here for eight hours. They can come for what they're here to do.
I'm sure they had to stay to get coffee.
Except for the coffee thing, which kind of we'll be, we'll be back to that one. But really just understanding that, um, when people are joining us, they are our guests. And we want to do everything we can to ensure that our guests feel comfortable in this home, right? It, it's a very different place. So our engagement has been changing over the past number of years. How we listen, again, Mayor Donovan was just at the market the other weekend, doing that one-on-one communication with folks, which is for elected officials, uh, can be absolutely terrifying and maybe not for you.
This is our wheelhouse.
It can still be scary, um, but really just all of those pieces. And for each one of us, not just staff, but members of council, to understand that, that we can act as navigators. We can help people connect to things without needing that really large, uh, bunch of knowledge. We can just help people get to what they need in a really comforting way. And I don't, I don't know how many times I was so thankful that your eyes did not just gloss over. And I was like, let me explain this council process. And I don't, I don't know if there are things that you wanted to share about kind of the big pieces that maybe were new to you when we were talking about municipal process, but I know it was frustrating.
Yeah, um, I think because the government style here is so much different than back home. It took me a lot of time to understand. So many times after consultation, I would come to Barbara, I was like, okay, I got it. This, 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 and that's what we can tell. And she's like, well, yes, but then this is not municipal, this is provincial, this is federal. But then, okay, so I think a lot of that, um, understanding and, um, I was not aware of as a layman in the government space. Um, but Barb was a good navigator for me.
We also, we also talked about, um, some really, and, and again, when that notion that when something comes back and it's not something that maybe you can work on, there is still a need to do a connection, to make a referral, to help people still keep going in, in that good direction and and two-on-one is always the thing that I, I really kind of help share with people, um, that we don't have to be the experts in everything. And when we have a knowledge gap, we can connect folks with things like two-on-one and, and talk a little bit more in conversation about helping everybody with those connections.
I just wanted to say, Tom V, it, it's not you, ha- at least half of the people that call me should be calling Keith or should be calling Cody or should be calling somebody else, but, but not here. But you do have to try and then say, I know you want, this is who you want to talk to, or, or staff are also very good at saying this is where you make a complaint about a tourism issue or something. Yeah, so most people don't know what we do.
And again, just really that sense of, um, always trying to understand that we have different knowledge than, than other people, uh, might have who are kind of existing outside of this very specialized space. And, and really understanding that and what can we provide to help people feel more, uh, more grounded and more welcome. So policies, this is a tough one to sum up in a few words, but reviewing council policies with this, um, equity, diversity and inclusion lens. And that is to, um, everything, and, and one of the examples of, of things that we can do is using this lens, and if we can start working on some of this, it gives us an opportunity before we get into the next election cycle to maybe open up opportunities for folks that might not be considering, um, fulfilling this role, right? So things like, and I apologize that staff are going to cringe right now if I talk about bringing, bringing policies back. Sorry Laura, um, but things like, you know, where are we with virtual participation? We talk about this in the accessibility space, right? If somebody has a physical barrier to being here in the space, can we, can we adapt or develop a policy to assist in that? If your meetings are held during work hours, I'm looking at some of the folks who, these are conversations I've certainly heard around the horseshoe. Does that put up barriers for folks who might not be in a position to, um, you know, to participate to the same extent? Those, everybody's going to have a different perspective on that, and I always, um, and I'm not saying anything is right or anything is wrong, but those are some specific policies that maybe you want to look at in order to say, like, are we doing the most that we can do to ensure that really more people might have an opportunity to serve in these roles? And then also Laura and I had the, the really good opportunity to, uh, to have a little bit of a practice run with our by-election. It was a great opportunity to, uh, to welcome Ian to the team, uh, going through that process. And again, we learned a lot during that very brief cycle of how we need to communicate, how we need to really, you know, from a staff perspective, help people understand the complexities of entering that race and getting ready to, uh, to take that on. And we'll probably get some feedback from you before, before we do it again. But that, that's where, uh, that's kind of what that's all about.
Just, just to comment, we used to meet in the evening, but it didn't work for staff. So I don't think this is a council policy, I think this is a staff policy. Um, with PAC always met in the evening, um, just about every even, uh, council met always in the evening, but it didn't work. And sometimes it didn't work for people who work in the evenings.
Yeah.
I guess my question about this staff's role is to run the election, not to influence the election. So this is kind of rubbed me a bit the wrong way, um, can you respond to that?
I, I would say, first of all, I want to apologize for that reaction, uh, that's not the intention, but I, I do understand that when when items like this pop up, it can make folks feel uncomfortable. Yeah, I mean, I, I think how staff can participate and not wanting to influence the outcome of an election. But I think that, um, if, if a goal is increasing, uh, how we approach equity, diversity and inclusion, ensuring that all of the policies that affect how council would operate would be, um, as inclusive as possible. Uh, and if that creates more space for folks to jump into, you know, running for office, I hope that doesn't appear to be influencing the outcome of an election, that's not the impact.
No, and, and if, if all meetings were at night, it would certainly affect staff and if, you know, we always used to meet only at night, but then it didn't work. You know, for example, we were meeting tonight, we would have four, five staff and, uh, six staff here at night.
Yeah.
So, and that's why it changed.
Yeah. And again, it's part of, you know, going through the review process doesn't always mean making changes. But it does mean allowing for dialogue to really understand why a decision is that way. To your point exactly, there are going to be folks, you know, council members might all be available at night. But if you want to create space for younger, uh, for younger folks to join your workforce who are looking after kids, you're right, evening work might be a barrier. So again, even doing the review process doesn't, doesn't mean that things are going to change. It means that we have an opportunity to just do that little check-in and say, is this doing, is this really doing the best for us? Is this representing us in, in the way that we want to? So hopefully that's a better way to, to translate that.
Yeah, so this didn't rub me the, that, in that way, only because I remember don't know who else was there, maybe, maybe like, at the NSFM one year, um, there was a workshop on engaging women in politics. Yep, clearly did okay around this table. But it was one of those things, it, but it was, so I, I don't see it as staff influencing it, I would like to see it in the, in, or in my head, I envisioned it as staff may open it up and us counselors gave information on what it was like to be, uh, an elected official from whatever walk of life we might be. Um, and then maybe it would influence people to run, uh, or, you know, and maybe not that time, maybe some other time in their life as well, but, um, that one stuck in my head and it was a really great. I actually felt really empowered when I left there because I'm like, look at all of these strong women doing some great things. So I, I, I thought like that. And when we did a review of our policies, attendance policy, maybe it was, and I think we were going to bring that back at some point too, to see if it worked out for us, because we tried to be as, as good as we could without putting it into practice. When we all get, um, the attendance policy and it's signed to our committees, I would like to think that they're all up for discussion. The appointments and the time, it, well, you all get our appointments as we, you know, based on our interest level. But the timing of it all is up for discussion with the committee members and the staff that support it. And then we come to an agreement as a group as to what that might look like and, and maybe it boxes, maybe it's during the day sometimes in the evenings other times, but so that it is inclusive of everyone and, and at least when you sign onto it, you know what you're getting involved in and there's input into it. So I see that as the inclusion part is, you can determine whether that's part of your, if it fits for you or not, but, um, the discussion to be had at the beginning. So, um, when we bring back the attendance policy, I, I think it does say that at some point that it says that it will be a discussion on time, but I don't know if we ever put staff in the discussion of timing, so maybe, maybe it needs to be, I don't know.
Well, that was clearly, yeah, what rubbed me the wrong way is that staff were going to influence the election and, and I think that's a road that can't be crossed. But, you know, I think for council, I, well, some people work in evenings and I, but definitely it was exactly that, that, that staff had young families or they've worked all day and so they don't want to be working all evening. That was the consider, that was the change, I think that predated Aaron actually, yeah.
Thank you. I just want to add to yours, um, when I was running for students unit election, it was not because I was told that I, this is something I can do. But it was a recommendation from an existing Acadia member that why don't you go for this? Because I think you'd be good. But I feel like, I wish there were, the people who were before me in that position would have pulled out in public that everyone can do it, it's for everyone and made it more like welcoming space. And not just like me thinking, oh, I don't belong here and that's what I struggle with. So I think it can be a great way for staff and council members to create that inclusive place for potential um, people who might be interested because Wolfville seems so many more, um, immigrants who are coming here and they, this might be something that would make them feel like they belong here, be it running for the government or just being a volunteer for the community oven. So I think that can create more like, people who belong to gender diverse group might think that oh, I don't think that's something I would be welcome for and that's something we need to eradicate. Disabled people think that might be thinking that, oh, I don't think with my disability, that's something I can do. But I think that everyone can do it. So maybe that, um, dialogue can be, uh, put out there for people and it can positively influence the engagement. The council might receive by the people who put their name forward for the elections.
Thanks. Um, I didn't take the running of the election, like, staff was trying to interfere, that was just my point of view. But as I'm on accessibility and we talk about plain language, the EDI lens needs to be put in every single proposal that we put out as staff, every single thing that I write, I need to think about it. So if I'm not sure, it might be helpful for somebody to look at it. Sometimes I send things to Barb, I'm like, I'm not sure, does this sound? And you know, and, and she'll give me advice, right? So it's always helpful to have that lens, but you need, everything we need to write needs to be through an EDI lens now. I mean, and it has to be inclusive, so we, we want to have representation from everywhere, so yeah, it has to be out there, right, so.
And, and from a staff perspective as well, we, we have a responsibility to remember plain language. And to remember that by the time something gets in front of council, we might have been sitting with it as staff for months. It might be our area of specialty, again, to keep council positions more inclusive. We can't always expect that level of expertise, staff really have to always remember to act as navigators and, and welcoming members of council into that space to gain that knowledge in order to make the best possible decisions for the community.
Yeah, so I mean, that's why I think training is so important for everybody to sort of be involved, so it's sort of in, infused there. I mean, I learned things from ta- talking to Tammy that I never thought about at all. It was like, jeez, I never thought about that.
So moving on to supporting cultural events, um, and this was, uh, this was really interesting. In the photo here, some of us had the pleasure of being freezing cold and getting soaked that day. That was our, our Heritage Day event, um, which was, uh, done in recognition this year of Elder Reed and Cho, Dr. Reed and Cho. So what we heard from the community was, um, we want to make folks feel welcome in Wolfville. And especially when they're missing their homes and familiar cultural experiences. What we can do about that is to acknowledge that diverse cultural needs exist and and in a, a conversation with Duncan Ibada and Tom V and myself, Tom V and Duncan went off onto this tangent about, Tom V had smelled something of the community oven and just hearing that longing for home in her voice, it was it was that moment where I'm like, oh my God, that is why we need to support cultural events that, that can do that. That can cause that momentary sense of remembrance and, and really just that lifting up of somebody and saying, you know, it can feel like home here too. So we don't have to be experts in that, um, even, and when you were working on, uh, supporting the event for holy, you are not going to do all of the, the religious ceremonies because that's not yours to do. But really what we're looking for is folks that we have already in our community who are doing this well. And from every conversation we were having, the community oven kept being mentioned, right? Who's doing this well, the oven? And they are not doing it accidentally. They have invested so much time in being uncomfortable and finding better processes and doing great training and assessing stuff. So they really have that good sense of, of how you can get into this space where you might not be comfortable or, or super knowledgeable, but they're really delivering it well. So the recommendation and, and something that we could do, again, keeping in mind the small amount of budget put away, is look at, at funding some more culturally relevant and culturally special events, but allowing somebody like the community oven folks to be the ones to facilitate that. And again, the Heritage Day event was such a nice opportunity, we partnered with the oven. They had partnerships with the folks from Blue Scap. It was wonderful to see Mayor Donovan, um. You were able to welcome folks to the town, good relationship building was happening, even though it was like the worst weather day.
Looks much better in that picture than it actually is.
I know, I know, we were just like stopping wet, wet and freezing, but you know, we shared food, the poetry was read, Jeremy Lutz was here earlier. He was present at that as well. It was just, it was a good example of how we can work together and really deliver some meaningful programming to our community. And, and yeah.
I, I just wanted to say, I don't know that we had that, we had a discussion, but I'm remembering I used to have an out and out multicultural festival. My kids were in junior high, high school at the time, and Marilyn Ganser, who still lives in Wolfville, who was the one who put that together and was down in, down in Little Park and, uh, all kinds of representatives, like boss, goodbye. It was a great event, but I think that it was always left to work and organize it. And farmers get tired, young men might get tired of one of these days, I'd be surprised, but, um, that is a fact.
And, and the farmer's market was mentioned here as well, Kelly was noting that they used to do some more diversity focused events. They would be interested in doing that again, but maybe just one a year and they would like some support. Either financial or they would like some support from, you know, town staff to help with that. And that was kind of the same feedback.
What, Wednesday night meals before COVID, or they, they were somewhat, uh, they were diverse.
Yeah. But, but again, you know, having that conversation with Kelly and she was quite frank about it, they, they were hard to pull off, it was stressful, it was an investment and with any investment, you never know how it's going to turn out, kind of bottom line wise. So that, that is something, you know, we certainly heard that we should do more of this. I, I think that that might be a way to actually make it happen. Um, that would support growth and capacity building with some of our community partners. This is Ally. We're all missing Ally this week as she, uh, she's wrapped up her internship. So we talked about um, recognitions and celebrations. And this was really one of people want us to, uh, you know, acknowledge, recognize, celebrate. Um, pay attention to and Ally, uh, during her internship over a six week period. She helped to work on this really cool activation for International Women's Day. And this is an example of how I think we can, we can offer these kind of experiences and activations to focus in our community. We can partner with, you know, with our interns and our go up students and we can partner with community agencies. So the, the first step, of course, is planning out a, a calendar, really understanding what it is that we are going to focus on. Um, so it's not a scramble and then we can make sure that it is properly um, resourced. And planned and that council all have opportunities to be informed and to participate and to, to be there taking it to the community. So the ones that, that kind of kept popping up. Um, uh, and, and again, this would be for full decision later. But again, internationals with International Women's Day, National Day for Truth and Recognition, uh, Truth and Reconciliation. Nova Scotia Heritage Day, Black Heritage Month and Pride. And I think that Kelton just informed me that we've. Got some cool stuff already coming together for Pride. That makes me really happy. Um, but yeah, so that's kind of that foundational, we, we don't have the capacity to do it all. Um, and again, I, I think Mayor Donovan, this ties into a little bit. Some of the, the conversations that have been happening about proclamations and we need to define this further. So th- this is kind of the first step. Okay, moving on. Uh, supporting newcomers. So this was, um, this was a big one. And this is not to say that we are not acknowledging all the folks that um, have located to Wolfville. Over the past number of years or even before then, recognition that, you know, uh, work has been done through the census and otherwise. But it was mind blowing to me that the Wong Center is supporting on average seven hundred students at any given time. That's a tremendous chunk of our population and something that I was not aware of. So in conversation, and this was a lot of our conversation too. Were issues around housing and healthcare and things that are really kind of outside of what the town might be working on. But these are issues being experienced. By our residents, even if they're short term residents coming to us as international students. And, and so that's why having that, that connection with the Wong Center. Was so important. It is that, that really important connector and, and just like. Maybe not everybody is familiar with the, the power and, and the abilities that, that the MOU brings to us. Again, having that dialogue with the Wong Center. I even felt I'd been, you know, I'd been here for almost two years. I'm like, I didn't have. A good understanding of what the Wong Center was and it was really through Tom's experiences and the work that she had been doing there. And also understanding that their capacity is, you know, is strained and that they do change staff. And people have to go into those roles. Um, and it's just. I, I think this is an area where we can do more listening and find ways to support. Because they are things that impact our residents. Um, this was a picture from the uh, welcome event that we did in September where uh, students were. Marking off um, where they were from internationally, which is really exciting. So again, just uh, regular conversations with the staff at the Wong Center to build that relationship. I don't know if you want to add a bit about.
Um, yeah, I think a lot of times you might have better resources than Acadia does in terms of support. I was talking to Barb how we have a clothing drive happening every year. But we are collecting clothes from students for other students. And I don't have extra squares to give to someone as, as much as I would. But um, a lot of families in Wolfville are retired or they may have their kids who have left and they have some clothes that they might. So maybe something like those things can be arranged for students or even um. You know, there's some people who go to UMass every week and they might, they won't mind taking some students with them. So all those interpersonal relationships can be built, which not only support that understaffed building. But also um, get to know students more because not every student gets the chance to do the stay at home. Or um, I've got what it's called where they stay with the whole family. No, it's just for the exchange or EAP program people. So this gets them to feel closer to the community as well.
And of course, the, the wish, I'm sure for all of us, and I'm certainly feeling this with Tom B, is that when somebody graduates, we don't want them to leave.
Yeah.
Hint, hint.
Yes. But I see Jim, but Wendy, after Jen, you've talked a few times about what, uh, an, uh, not an exchange, but. People being connected with the program, maybe after Jen, can you, because I don't know who started that or if that came out of Canadian, out of Acadia, Jen?
Um, yeah. So just to build on you talking to the Wong Center, um, International Center with seven hundred students, which is a lot. And then my mind is thinking, how can we think, make things meaningful and actionable? And then Tani, you just brought up about the clothing. And so that gets me back to. I think I've said it a few times and, and Council McKay has said it too, how important it is to share. Information from Acadia into the community and have it going back and forth because the, this is something very easy for. For myself to do. I didn't know there's a clothing drive. I could be, you know, passing out clothes. If anybody wanted to wear them, that is, but. Um, you know, but so those are things that the community would actually really get behind if we knew it and it, and it's so. How in my role as a counselor, can I facilitate this and can the town facilitate this? And um, I, I think that everything that's, you know, the international students and minorities are, are up against like coming here, like Tani has to pay. Twice the amount of tuition, right? So we have the food insecurities, we have housing, all those issues that are going to work well and, and with the MOU, right? So this is, this is a great time to be tying all that in right now.
So my question to Wendy was who initiated? I, I understand the program, but did it come out of Acadia or?
Yes, yes, yes. I think it was, um, Julie Snare, who used to be the.
Yeah, that was my last name. It was Julie. Was it Snare?
Yeah, that's my record. I, I don't know if she started it, but it, it, there's history. I remember a number of years ago writing a piece for the Alumni Bulletin. About the program because it was kind of, you know, under the radar. Um, nobody, no, nobody lived with us. But we signed up, I don't know, at least four times and caused some international travel as a result. But the, the students that were interested in working on their English skills would come over for meals. And we, just in that process, you get to be true friends. Um, and you know, if they needed some clothing, then that got expressed, drives were had. Um, I'm still in touch with two of the students that we um, were hosts for, not literally, but hosted. Um, and it was very, very warm experience. I should also mention that the Baptist, Baptist Church has a clothing. Area in the basement. So there's like, it's mostly used by people with the food bank. Um, but this year, I mean, that's available and there's also, um. There was a lot of uh, recruiting of clothing um, through the homelessness initiatives.
Well, yeah, when.
So it's like, there's a lot of.
People looking Ukrainians. There was like, the whole room was full of used clothes. You could just come and take off the racks.
And, and that was my impression, speaking with folks from the Wong Center was that. Unless we're asking, they're probably not thinking to bring it forward, right? So breaking down those barriers. Now at least I know that I should be checking on a, on a regular basis. Um, and really getting that information circulating. So really important. Um, again, council knows that, that the fall event was really successful. It was well received. Um, we also have a number of international students who end up starting their time in Wolfville in January. So. Yeah, I know. So really, um, keeping in mind that we might want to, obviously not the same scale, but we might want to uh. Really mindfully facilitate some events in, in January to ensure that our new residents. Have the best opportunity to fall in love with our community. So these were some of the additional issues that came up that we heard often. Again, they were not the pieces that. You know, maybe we have the capacity or the, you know, talking about staying in our lane. But you know, these were conversations that um, that were had and, and really. Ongoing, right? Um, we, we talked and thank you so much for passing that on this morning to the WBBC. That access to culturally uh, relevant food, culturally meaningful food. How do we ensure that in a local context, context? Access to transportation, access to healthcare, access to housing. There's a whole narrative around housing that. Uh, probably needs to be unpacked. This is not the time or the place for it. Um, and then again, having more access to relationship building experiences, as Tani noted and similar to what you're talking about, uh, Council Elliot. And then how do we also develop more resource sharing opportunities, pride shares or, you know. I, I have these extra things that I'm no longer using and, and women of Wolfville is a great, great, you know, example of how. Stuff does get shared in the community, but really building on those. So these are kind of like, once everything else is under control. We're so great at all of this and want to do more. These are some really key, important issues. Um, to go a little bit further outside of that scope. And that is the end of the slides. Questions and please hit up Tom B. I realize this is one, let's go back. There, there we go. No controversy here. Um, yeah, questions, questions, comments.
Oh, first I want to thank you for all your work and it was nice to get to know Tani and her roommates. Cause I did spend some time down at the market and it was so fun talking to, to your roommates, actually, um, and getting their perspectives too. Um, but I want to know from Tani's point of view, um, you're graduating. So you have come here. Probably four years younger than you are now. You are still a very young person. And what are, what are the biggest things that you learned doing this project? But also your evolution from when you came here? To now that you're graduating, what have you noticed the differences and what is one of the biggest? Takeaways from Wolfville, our lovely town that you love.
Uh, when I came, I was very scared. I didn't even talk to anyone in my first semester. I had two friends. Who lived on either side of my room and it was just, hi, how are you? And that's it. I was very scared. I just felt like I didn't belong here. And there was no special effort by literally anyone. Um, to make me feel welcome or anything. I, the first time I came to Main Street was after one month of my arrival here because I was scared I'll get lost. So I just stayed till V A P and then I would go back up. And people are like talking about Main Street downtown. I was like, what are they talking about? I was so scared. And then my dad one day he's like, okay. Let's be on video call and then I can navigate. I was like, okay. Um, and I'm glad that that's not experience of international students anymore. Um. The new generation is way bolder than I was. Um, I think the increased awareness around the gaps, even at Acadia and Wolfville. There was no ambassador program. It was created in twenty nineteen. Um, where every international student would be paired up with a mentor who was an upper year student. Who guides them with every single thing you need from transitioning to the place you come from to here, be it courses. Or um, just looking for jobs or how do I build a resume? Everything is what we help them or at least guide them. Um, so that's a big help, I think, for every, everyone who seek that help. Um, it, it's, it, it has been a great. Journey for me in seeing how much, um, how much further we've come in acknowledging the gaps and getting that. Um, people taking the initiative to change instead of, you know, just hiding it under the rug that, oh yeah, no, that doesn't exist. So I think that's a big step. Um, given the capacity of town and Acadia, smaller town and university, we kind of expect things that happen at Dell or. Uh, University of Toronto. But I think um, that's what makes this place more unique for me. Once I started stepping out of my comfort zone, I met people and um. The, the, those things really um, impacted my will to stay in Wolfville after graduation. Um, ideally, I would like to say my mom loves it. Also because it's away from all the distractions is what she says.
Yeah, I like Wolfville a lot more.
Thank you. And we are grateful that you ventured down downtown Wolfville. So.
I just, um, because I'm, I'm, I'm aware of time, but I, I just wanted to. Thank council for the opportunity. Um, sometimes it's terrifying when you're given a really big chunky thing to do. Welcome to the world of special projects. Um, in a very brief period of time, none of it would have been possible without Tom B. Um, and it was just, uh, it was a really meaningful project for me and to have somebody who. Acted as, you know, Tommy got to mentor me quite, quite a bit through this process. But I was really, I mean, what a cool thing to do. And this is one of these pieces that. I'm so excited that we could do it in a real Wolfville style and keep it um. Keep it really meaningful, right? It's, it's easy to drop stuff like this out to a firm. And I'm so glad we didn't. I, I just think what we came back with does give us that, that floor to build on. So thanks.
Thank you.
Awesome.
All right. If there are. I, I'm not sure if, sure, I'm sure we do. Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to ask Tom B, if you've got to speak with many, um. New immigrants, non-students who are, but new immigrants, whether it be the, the Syrian families or. Just anybody from somewhere else who lands here. Um, was that part of what your time allowed?
Um, I had some previous knowledge of the new people through the. A few of my friends go to the mosque regularly and there have been more families who um, go to mosques. So that's how I was talking to them. That was prior to this project. So I was, when I would go pick him up or drop him, I would see them and then talk to them. Um, so that's how I knew of their side of stories, uh, which I tried to include in this project. But in this timeline, I didn't specifically get time to dedicate to just talking to the new um, families. So. We tried to have an open dialogue in the farmer's market to see if they can, if they felt comfortable and if they were present there, they could come. Uh, yeah.
I think too, in our conversations with Duncan Ibada. Duncan was really able to share as kind of, he, he was that, he's that influencer in that space, that connector for us. And he was able to bring back a lot of that knowledge on behalf of the, the folks locally that he's been working with as well.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are uh. About five minutes. Um, we are going to uh. Go into, go in camera and I think everybody will be leaving other than Erin.
Can I ask a question before we move on? So that was a plethora of information.
Farvah, the question.
I, I'm not really, yeah. We're not. Else to do now. I mean, yeah. It was a lot to process. So I think we're just kind of stuck in processing information and then, oh wait, let's, what's, what's up? What's up next?
Um, welcome to the last ten weeks of my life. Uh, so I, I want you to, I really want you to sit with this now. Um, you know, you just received it. You've read through it. We've talked through some of it. Um, I'm sure Tom B will be able to answer questions, go forward. I can as well. Think about what resonates for you, where you would really like staff to start. Maybe if there's pieces that council want to action, um, and I'd like to pick this up again in the future. Um, and we can go through, uh, through Erin on, on that. But yeah, don't. Don't rush it. Let it, let it just sit for a bit.
I'm wondering if maybe not now because we're close to going in camera, but I thank you for that, Jody. I, I wonder if we. Need part B where we might just sit in a, I think this, what I call a workshop style. Is good. Um, I, I feel that it's, I, I had asked Erin, I said, if we do this afternoon, I don't want it to be videotaped. Uh, because I think it's sensitive. Um, not that we have trouble saying things that are sensitive, but we know that people take, uh. We live in a world where despite what you said at the beginning, I don't think it is a safe place. I think that. Anything you say which could be questioning, somebody will take it and suddenly it becomes not exactly what you said or intended. Anything you say, which could be questioning, somebody will take it and suddenly it becomes not exactly what you said or intended. So. Um, but I do think it would be helpful if we sat with this for a while and then. Came back in what I've called the workshop, which, you know, if people want to come and sit in the gallery, but. That, which is quite different than if it lives forever on the internet and people can splice pizzas out and, and, you know. And they use it against us. Let's face it, that happens all the time. Um. But I think we need to do that and kind of say, what do we do next? Where does this go? What goes into next year's ops plan or, or? I think there are some things missing in this report. I, I've provided my notes to the C A O. Um, that I would like to see added, but um, you know, I think it's a work in progress. Jody?
Yeah, uh, and I am also cognizant of the fact that the next, um. We are sort of action oriented. We'll have the west or the east end coming up and we'll have other things coming up on our plate. So. Uh, I don't want this to get lost. So I, I don't know, in, do we earmark it to say? That our next nine to four meeting, we, that's when we add this to the workshop again or something, because. I just know there's so many things that would just get, keep getting thrown on the plate that, um, you know, we're a busy little town. So. But I don't want it to get lost. And that was my fear. If we sit and then don't have a comeback time or space to, to talk about it again, then we just don't do it. And I would hate to have that happen.
So maybe we could, so the next, uh, I will, I will not be here until, nor will you. Nor will Erin. So that might not be, uh, that might not be the. So unless we have a special, anyways, we can work with that, but just that, that would be a perfect time, but three of us won't be here.
So.
I could do, yeah, we might, yeah, actually have a short one in June and have a long day in July or something like that since.
Okay, it's nice to have this. It would even be okay if it was a special one. I think, I think this is something where we can workshop it. So it would be, you know.
Yeah, okay, normal. Sounds good. All right, um, could I have a motion to go in camera, please? Uh, Counselor Elliot, seconded by Deputy Mayor, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Host, uh, we are in camera, the.